Executive session meeting minutes, starting January fourth, 11th, 18th, 25th, February 8th, April 11th, Item One, May 6th, Item Two, 1996, August 22nd, 1996, March 20th, 27th, April 3rd, 10th, 17th of 1997, January 28th, April 29th, June 17th of 1999, March 9th, 18th, October 26th, November 9th, 16th, 22nd, 29th, December 7th, 14th, 21 of the year 2000, and February 17th, 2001, March 25th, April 30th, and September 26th, 2002.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Next item we have is to confirm our future meeting dates. Right now, we have meetings scheduled for April 23rd and April 30th. April 23rd primarily for the fire chief interviews. Do those dates still work for everybody?
I don't think they actually.
Yep, okay. And then after that, we will, we already are scheduled for May 4th, which is the beginning of town meeting. And hopefully, that works with everybody's schedules, too. Okay. Next item we have is citizen speak. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak to the board? Seeing no one, we are going to move on. And the next item we had scheduled is a public hearing on a pole location. I understand that there is a request to continue that to a new date. But because it was posted, I think we still need to open the meeting. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, a public hearing has been scheduled for tonight, April 16th at 6:30 regarding the joint petition of Horizon Engineering and electric requesting permission to place one new pole including a necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way or ways. Canton Avenue, one new pole, Pole 3/71-1, near 1475 Canton Avenue, approximately 44 feet westerly of existing Pole 371. I understand that there has been a request to continue this hearing, which in effect is to place a new support pole and guy wire at this location. But upon visiting the site, according to a note from John Thompson, Assistant Town Engineer, it's apparent that significant damage to private overhanging trees might occur with the placement of the proposed pole. There's a request to meet with the Horizon engineer to look at alternate methods for support, but that individual was not available. Apparently, it is out for the next several weeks. So there's a request to continue this hearing to a new date. First of all, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this tonight before we discuss the issue of postponement? Okay.
I don't think you can postpone to a date on this.
I think we'd have to give an exact date, wouldn't we?
Right.
Yeah.
And if we can't, we should close this one and just have another.
And have to republish. That'd be fair for people who want to come.
Because it's a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to have to be after town meeting, because you have to wait at least two weeks.
And this apparently person isn't even available for several weeks, anyway. So we can... What we could do, then, is since I don't hear anybody speaking, we could have to entertain a motion to close the hearing, and then it would have to be republished for a new date. Okay?
I'd make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And Chief Scoble has not yet arrived, so we're going to...
Chief Larson is going to come on talking about the firehouse renovations.
Great, that's a great idea. We're going to postpone Item Six at present. We're waiting for one further member of the screening committee, and instead, we'll invite Chief Larson to the table to talk about possible firehouse renovations. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief.
I think this is...
Oh, yeah, that's actually a recorder, I think, from a reporter from The Times.
Put that there, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we've talked a little bit, and I've been talking with Kevin Muir also about taking advantage of any possible stimulus money that might be being made available this summer for fire station repairs or rebuilding or whatever. As we found out with the library, you're always in a better position if you have plans ready to go when the time becomes available. We kind of talked about two things. One of them is, I had a copy of a fire study report that the town of Westwood did, and the reason they did that was because of the Westwood Station project. And they really had a A to Z study of the fire department done, because that was such a huge addition to the burden that was going to be put on the town, that they really wanted to have it professionally studied. And they did an excellent report, and I was very impressed with it. But as I was going back over it, I just don't really know if it's necessary to really to have that in-depth of a report, you know, to fully study every facet of the fire department, at least at this time. I think in order to be in a position where we would have some plans that might help us out if some stimulus money came up, which could very likely be in, you know, July or August or whatever, the summer, there's no definite... But there's, you see, some good feelings that there will be something available. I had talked to Maguire Group, which is an architectural firm that specializes in public safety buildings. And they'd been out and they had looked at Fire Headquarters in 2007, and I wanted to get some feel on whether there was a potential for renovating Fire Headquarters to meet our present and future needs. And he seemed to think there was, and we bounced around a few ideas and everything. And so I got back to him the other day, and his feeling was that it would cost about $3,000 to $4,000 to have the conceptual drawings made up to renovate Fire Headquarters. These would include, you know, conceptual drawings, suggested floor plans that would meet the space needs that we have, a site and evaluate, a site and, um, site plan and everything, and also a cost estimate. And that, you know, the architect firm said, that a fellow I talked to was Peter Morrison, and he said that this would be the first step in any building that you might have. And this would be what you'd probably want to have in order to take advantage of any grant opportunities. The next step would be to have a detailed drawing made up so that you could actually do the construction.
So if stimulus money was to become available, you need these plans really made to...
Right.
That's what they call shovel range, right?
Right. This would be like you see a lot of times, when you see a conceptual drawing of like what the library is going to look like when it was done.
Mm-hmm.
And you see a drawing of the floor, the floor place, and maybe an elevation, and then a cost estimate. Well, this is kind of the first step in the process. And they also include a cost estimate.
Okay. So let me just clarify. In the past, we've been talking about trying to set up a committee to do a study similar to the Library Space Needs Committee. And there still might be some reason to do that, you know, in the future. But what you're suggesting is because stimulus money may be available, but only with a limited window, within the next year or two years, that in order for us to at least get on the list for that, we'd have to have something more than simply a treaty set up. We'd actually have to have at least some plan of what we could do in terms of renovating. Which I think makes sense only because even with the library project, I mean, Marge Jeffries happens to be here, who was intimately involved in that. That process takes a while, from the Space Needs Committee to, you know, moving forward to looking for resources. That can be several years. And the condition certainly of the building that we have here, you know, probably doesn't warrant that kind of delay. If there is money available even to rehab that building, given that that building will always have arguably some municipal use, it probably makes sense to...
You see, not the...
Source, though, even of the $3,000 to $4,000, that's in the air. Do you have any ideas of that?
I think Kevin have gone over the budget, and we feel confident that we'll be able to find some money somewhere that we could free up for this. We have, and I don't think we've actually put up any on it, but we feel pretty sure that we'll be able to find something for $3,000 to $4,000.
Do we need to, does that have to go out as an RFP, given the amount?
We'd be doing an RFP at some point in time, but right now, we just want to kind of have the board think about the possibility of doing this. We swap, isolate some funds, obviously, to do, bring it back to the board, and then we go out and do a bid for the project.
I think it's like an RFQ, since it's for professional work.
Consultants, yeah.
But then you want to get several prices, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to rely entirely on this estimate, but it gives us some idea what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, I think it makes good sense to do some, you know, the scope of work that the town might consider undertaking wouldn't necessarily be everything that was detailed in such a report.
Suggested, right.
I think, you know, that person would have to work with the building commissioner and town engineer, if necessary, I suppose, think about in that list of the...
I think from the perspective of the board, we should keep it separate, you know, the two things separate, but the facilities study, the fire facility study committee will contemplate in this.
Right.
Because stimulus money is stimulus money, as you said. If we come up, you know, like the old plan, the 30-year-old plan was to have two stations, you know, one at the skating rink and one at farm ball.
Right.
And if the town decides to do that as a long-term goal, that's different from that. So we should take advantage of this.
Right, we can still look at that. We can still look at that.
Right.
I think to look at the entire thing from A to Z, and, you know, to contemplate possible relocations and, you know, closing a fire station, relocating, you know, combining fire stations, I think if you're not going to do anything until you have all those questions answered, I mean, we could be around for a long, long time in a situation to take advantage of some.
We have to wait to free up some of this debt, too, on these bridges.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and there are definitely interim building improvements that need to be made. We've talked about them all when we're again. So I know, even without doing the study, you know what some of them are because you've identified them already. But it would be nice, I think, to have an overview and then be able to set some priorities depending on whether and how much funding might be available.
My feeling also, from talking to a few people, is that they were looking more favorable on renovations than they were on new construction.
With stimulus?
Right. And I've emailed, I sent a letter to Stephen Lynch and also to Brian Joyce, and to ask them to keep me up to date as these things progress, because some of these people are more involved with it, you know, on the higher levels. And so they're going to keep me up to date.
And the thought is, I know that, you know, you and I have spoken very briefly a while ago about ideas of what you'd like to see happen, and obviously, some of it is just energy efficiency within the building itself, maybe new windows, things like that, but you're also looking at maybe a training, a better training area than what you presently have. But you're not looking at anything really dramatic in terms of change.
No, I think that, I think putting in an addition and renovating that space would, you know, I think would meet our needs.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Short term, anyway. Okay?
Even long-term, five seconds, no.
Okay.
I think it'll bring us into the future. We'd be able to have a, you know, a training room where we could, you know, do our training and everything. And that might end up being a combination kitchen training room, but that's all right, you know, to utilize the space as best we can.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, I think we'll be all right.
Okay. Okay.
So, um...
Are you asking for...
Would you take a vote to authorize doing an RFQ at this point, or is it too early?
Maybe a little bit too early.
Yeah, really.
To identify some funding.
Okay, so you'll be coming back to us to get...
We just wanted to make sure we had your support as far as...
But stimulus money is, the fire department spends $10 trillion every year, so...
You've got to take advantage when you can, yeah.
Maybe at our next meeting, we can, the one where we interview the firefighters.
Do you think we'll have funding information by that point?
Yes, we'll try to get as much information, either the next meeting or...
The 23rd or the 30th?
Or sometime during before town meeting. Next week, I do have an appointment to meet with the architect. He's going to stop buying over all again, so that, and, you know, I can talk to him then. They did the new fire station in Franklin, they did a great job to that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the RFQ has to say what the scope of the study should be. That stuff has to be determined. That's what we could review, you know, when you have that ready. And then, I mean, the concept makes sense to me. There's going to be some money available. I think we should try to take advantage of it. I know we need things done to that building. I don't know when we'll be able to do anything more, so I think we should do it.
Yeah, and take advantage of it. So I think you have the consensus of the board to go ahead and gather some more information for us, and in the meantime, we'll look at funding options, and then perhaps at either the meeting on the 23rd or the 30th, depending on when we can get out this information, we could perhaps at that point take a vote to issue an RFQ.
Yeah, I just worked with Representative Lynn Schumpert, somebody for Winter Valley with Walt Fittelsky, and I can tell you that he's a hands-on guy. I mean, he wants to see plans. He wants to know what's for... He took a ride out here on a Saturday on his own, he went up to Winter Valley and walked around. So if he's serious, if he's going to help you, he wants to know what he's doing.
Yeah, that's good.
And so it was very impressive to me that he did that. Just came out on his own on a Saturday, went up there. So, I think that's what we need. We need something concrete to show him if we go in there.
Well, we keep communications with Stephen Lynch open, because I know the fire chiefs really like him, because he's, you know, he's a good person to have behind you. Three weeks ago, she's well over 60 firefighters from, fire chiefs from Massachusetts down in Washington, DC.
Nice picture in the paper, by the way, today, yeah.
We met, it was in today.
It was, in the Milton Times today. Nice picture.
And we got a chance to meet with them and let them know that you're watching, you know, because they say they support you, and I'm sure they do, but it's always good for them to see you.
Great, well, thanks. We appreciate you following through on this and bringing it to our attention, and we'll talk more about it, obviously, on either the 23rd or 30th.
As soon as I get there.
Yeah, great. Thanks very much, Chief.
Chief, Fire Chief Screening Committee is here.
Wonderful. So we will, we'll go back to Item Six, and we welcome to table Chief William Scoble, Chief Kevin Robinson, Chief Kenneth Galligan, Steve Keel, and Michael Reardon, known collectively as Fire Chief Screening Committee. We welcome you all to the table. I brought the tapes for you to take.
Okay, yes.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Hi.
Hi, Kevin Robinson.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good, Steve, how are you?
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Chief, how are you?
Yeah, I'll look at those so we can decide.
Oh, no, we appreciate you being here. So first of all, I want to thank all of you, you know, before we get into your report, for the extraordinary amount of time and effort that you have put in volunteering to help us in our search to try and fill the shoes of Chief Larson, who is going to be leaving us shortly. I think some of us have had an opportunity, we received a packet that had information including the types of questions that were asked, and there are interview tapes, I think that we're all going to have an opportunity to take a look at as well. And it's just incredible to me, both the benefit of your experience that we have and the fact that you were willing to take so much time to help us out here. So we really very much appreciate that. And I understand that you have reached some conclusions, at least in terms of the three candidates that you've had to winnow down from the other applications, so...
Yeah. The process, obviously, is very serious to those of us on the committee. Obviously, two chiefs with me that are very experienced. We represent different sizes of communities, but bring, I think, a cross section of the Commonwealth, but also Eastern Massachusetts to you. Your two members from your other boards were phenomenal. I have to tell you that. We really, really enjoyed it. They came into this process not really knowing what we do, because it's a very different job that we do. But their willingness to learn, how they pitched in, and then what they brought to the table from their own perspectives of their own professional lives, as well as how that they serve the town, it really made for a really good working group. And I think we had a good time. We did meet a lot, because we wanted to be sure what it is you wanted from us. And so we needed to cull that down and work that into our process. Many telephone conversations and emails with Kevin, you know, to get it to the point of what is it you want from us, because that really is key. We all have our thoughts, and that's great, but what is it that you want? And so, given that, we sat, we looked at how we wanted to formulate questions, what kind of a process we wanted to put on. To screen for a fire chief does require testing all of these different areas that is outlined in the letters to you. We formulated the questions, we emailed back and forth, we worked them within the areas that we wanted to cover, which was not only firefighting, which, for the most part, we figured by the time you get to this, you better know that part of the job. But it is about budgeting. It is about personnel issues. It is about collective bargaining. It's all of these things. It's about visioning. You were just talking with Chief Larson about the stations, and it's something that all of us fight, is trying to upgrade them and keep them modernized. And although the candidates may not have done that, you know, are they prepared to do it? What have they done to bring themselves to this point, to put themselves forward to be chief of your fire department? Because in the end, that's what it is. It isn't the fire chief's fire department. It's your fire department, the people's. So we took that, we formulated our questions based around that, we worked in money issues, we worked in personnel issues, we worked in management issues. We had a bunch of questions, some of them we combined. Some of them were very lengthy, and so it also tested their ability to test. It's a very nerve-wracking process for the candidates who are sitting there, but that's okay, because the job is pretty nerve-wracking. And so that also plays into it. I think it was very nice to see that six internal candidates stepped forward to go through the process. And that is very remarkable in this day and age, very commendable, all officers of your fire department. Each one took about an hour, as we asked our questions and went through. We did have a fire scenario, because commanding a fire has changed over the years. And what we want to see is, do you understand, the candidate, what has changed and things that you have to look at that weren't necessarily done in the past? Do you look at accountability? Do you look at rehabbing your people? Do you have enough people to begin with if you're faced with a serious situation? And these are the types of things that were in the fire scenario that we tested. So all of them get put through this. I can tell you that we were very careful about the security of the process, that no one had to see the questions. The candidates were sequestered, so there could never be any question about impropriety, which protects them, protects us, protects everybody. So we were very careful about that as well. The testing was done in the media downstairs here. All of us were present, we all had our grading sheets done separately, combined onto a sheet which was then all put together. That being said, the three candidates that you have in front of you are the ones that, between the testing process, resumes, and everything that went with it, and your command to us of what you were looking for is how the process came out. Working with Kevin, the letters were sent. I would have to say that you asked us for three candidates, we have given you three candidates. I will tell you, you had six very good candidates.
That's good to hear.
We can only forward three to you, so those are the three that you have.
So I have three listed here, and I understand they're not listed in ranked order, it's simply listed alphabetical.
That's correct.
So that would be Deputy Chief John P. Foley, Jr., Deputy Chief John J. Grant, Jr., and Deputy Chief Brian P. Lenahan.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. I have to say, I had an opportunity to take a look at the tapes, and we're going to be hard pressed to find some other questions, I think, to ask during our interview, because they really are far-reaching. You know, it covered a lot of different areas, and obviously, you know, as you said, that's some, all of those are areas that the chief will be responsible for. And as much as I've appreciated the work that Chief Larson does, listening to this interview and the questions that were asked made me appreciate him even more for the variety of issues that he has to face. I mean, people think of it in terms of putting out fires, but there's so much more to the job than that.
That's the least part of it.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Muir?
I was just going to say, you know, Chief Scoble had said a point that I think, you know, should be underscored, the fact that all of the six candidates probably would be, you know, if you had to pick, you'd put all six, and then the board would pick all six. If there were more that applied, there probably would have been more. And I think that talks about the professionalism of our fire service at this time, that we have these type of qualified candidates in front of you now, and the quality of the firefighters that, you know, are present here, but who probably could have been.
It's very true. You know, the credentials that some of them bring to the table were very impressive to us as we looked through resumes. I think it gets some people that you'd be proud of.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. Going forward, in the event that the board members have any questions at the committee, I mean, I know officially, your job is done. You've provided us with the list, you've done this great, you know, search for us...
You can pick up the chicks on the way out.
Really? In the event that the board has questions, you know, of the committee, is it, would it be possible for us to contact you all?
We have, after speaking with Kevin, have emailed the other members of the committee that, you know, should you wish to call us and ask us about process, the candidates or whatever, that certainly we'd be available to do so.
You'd be willing to do that, so we appreciate that. Just when you thought you were done. We appreciate the opportunity.
For the chiefs, is this a process that you've seen in other towns? Is this, in your opinion, the way to go?
Aggressive town, okay.
Aggressive town.
Oh, that's good to hear.
You draw yourself that you're doing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is appropriate, yeah.
Okay. This is my second chief that I've appointed, and in my experience, and he didn't do it this way the last...
Assessment centers, whether they be informal or formal, are the way you can do it, even within the civil service process now. Even for chief's jobs, it can be done as a sole assessment center. Assessment centers can go anywhere from an hour to a multi-day period, depending on what it is that you want to test. There are many different types of exercises that you can do within it. We chose an oral board review way to do it, plus the fire problem. You can do fire problems projected up on the screen at our real time. You can do in basket, out basket exercises. You can do personnel issues where you have role-playing. We tried to incorporate all that into the oral board process. And I think if you look at the questions, you'll see we grab those areas and put them in there in some form or another in a question.
Well, it was obviously during the questioning that you all had an investment, not so much in the individual who was being chosen, but in getting a good person, you know, or good people, three good candidates out of it. And we appreciate that investment of time and effort, because obviously, it's a very important position for our board as well, and for the residents of the town.
Chief Galligan is a past president of the Chiefs Association. I am a past president. Kevin is the first vice, will be next month, the first vice president, so he's working his way up.
Oh, so you were a good person to hang out with at your meeting.
As professionals, you know, I mean, we really, we believe in good fire chiefs. We believe in professionals doing the job. The other two members of the board, it's their town. So when you talk about investment, I think all of us did in one way or another. Certainly, that was investment.
That showed. Well, thank you.
The other two members from the board have been off a lot of our firefighter.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
You do with the chairman, leading chairman of the Subcommittee on Public Safety, is that?
That's correct. And now you know even more. Well, we very much appreciate it. I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to add, but we, I know you're all busy, and we appreciate your time, but...
You have, you know, what we had. I believe there's one more sheet that Kevin wants from me, and I'll get that to him.
Okay.
Email that to him tomorrow.
Okay.
Which is just some supplemental information for you. And then if at any time through the process that you want to contact any of us, Kevin has our emails and our telephone numbers.
Great.
Contacts, so...
Great. Well, thank you again.
Be happy to do it.
Very, very. I'd say you ask great questions.
Yeah.
And there probably will be some repetition in our interviews, because there are questions that we really want to hear about and let the public hear answers to. And, you know, I'm just so happy that you incorporated our concerns and then, of course, addressed your knowledge of...
There are other questions there, and if you would like through Kevin, then I can forward you some others that you can...
Oh, great. That'll help.
All right, thank you.
We've done this before, so...
Great, well, thank you again. We really, very much appreciate your time.
And understand that we all get something out of this, too. You always learn something about another department's operation, different ways of doing things, and it's, you know, we don't come out empty-handed out of this.
Well, we're glad to hear that as well.
Very good.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Take care, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Take care, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy we could help you.
Thank you. We need to go to our committee. Now, as we already mentioned, we'll be beginning the process of our interviews of the three candidates, starting on April 23rd, and that will be televised as well.
Yeah, just as a brief observation, Madam Chairman, and I think Mrs. McGeprich would agree with me, you know, I was a selectman a long time ago, we've got, this process now, we'll come up with a fire chief, which is, I think, a really, a great way to pick a fire chief. We went through a similar process with the police chief, and this is the way all of these positions should be, and we went through a similar one with the town administrator's job, and I think this is the way that all of these jobs should be handled, is to get as much input from professionals as you can.
I agree.
You know, keeps the...
And we're lucky they were willing to donate the time, because they're all really busy people, all five, yeah.
Just us.
And Madam Chairman, there were quite a number of meetings, I couldn't begin to count the number of times they met to this process today.
Really?
Even just in formulating the questions, I understand there were lots of meetings, yeah.
That's not counting, you know, telephone calls and emails and the like, so there really is, it was a really, you know, stellar committee as far as being, you know, really taking the charge to town, and working very hard, and I think that shows.
Yeah, we'd like to send a thank you letter to all of them for their service from here as well, thank you.
And also, you know, to give a case of, to the working chiefs, I think the following the right was retired, but to the board of the selectmen, what town administration, it's just eleven, you know, they've all paid their time, you know.
How much we appreciate it.
The town administration really appreciates it.
Good. Okay, moving on, next item we have, we actually have a discussion on fee schedule revisions for inspectional services, and we welcome to the table, Mr. Prondak.
Reverend Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know long ago, we talked about the, taking a look at the fee schedule that we have for the building department, or inspectional services as I should say, and I, true to form, you took an intensive look at it, comparing it to other communities, what we charge for permit fees, for example, what other communities charge, to see if in some cases we were charging what we should, in others, you know, were we charging too much compared to other communities, and we have received your report, so first of all, I'd like to hear a little bit from you about, you know, what you found during your review, and if you have some recommendations, I understand you have some recommendations for us.
I do, I have some recommendations for a revision to the fee schedule. I think we've all, all of the selectmen have mentioned it, at least in passing, over the last year and a half or so, and so we've looked at it, as time permitted, over the course of time, and come up with this. I think that where the basic building permit fee is on par with most other towns, they range anywhere between eight and fifteen dollars per thousand, based on the value of a particular project. So, we were at twelve, a lot of towns do have a higher fee for commercial projects, and we did not have that, so I recommended a change of three dollars per thousand, up to fifteen dollars for commercial. So, that would leave the bulk of our permitting is one and two family homes, so that would remain unchanged under this proposal. Electrical permits would stay the same, the biggest change in this whole thing is to the plumbing permits, where they were previously based on a per fixture charge, and I think they probably haven't been increased in a long, long time. So, a lot of, a lot of why we came to the rationale behind what we're proposing, just based on the fact that plumbers would come in and would tell them what the fee is for a particular project, and they would say, really, not, that's all.
It's a sign that you need to increase it.
So, we're proposing that, you made the same as the electrical permits, electrical permits based on the value of the work, thirty-five dollars per thousand for the first ten thousand, and then ten dollars per thousand for each additional thousand or part thereof after that.
It's important to note here, before you continue, that the amounts charged are not simply just numbers that are chosen out of the air, the purpose of charging these fees, you don't make a profit on it, it's actually based, from what I understand, on the number of staff hours, the amount of work that actually takes to prepare the permit, so it's a combination of things. I notice here in your, you said it's based on estimates of staff hours needing to accomplish the application process, the actual time for the inspections, reports, re-inspections, and certificate issuance, so it's actually based on trying to figure out how much time it actually takes, and the work that's needed in order to get the permit to the individual.
Yes.
Okay.
One of the, a certain portion of the work that we do in a year, we have to inspect the existing buildings, and we go in periodically as mandated by the state building code, and since nineteen seventy-five, the fees for those inspections were set by the state building code, and they are, they were the same today as they were in nineteen seventy-five. But in two thousand and nine, we had, the state came out with a new, the seventh edition of the state building code, and they eliminated their fee schedule, so the timing is kind of good in this, in that we would have had to look at at least that portion of it. So, we did some comparison to other towns, and there are some increases in those fees. It's hard to do a clean comparison of fees with other towns, because everybody's fee schedule is different, just like everybody's zoning by law is different, so we just did the best we could on the comparison, but for example, a dormitory, an inspection under the old fee schedule would have been forty dollars plus five, forty dollars for the first five units, and two dollars each additional unit, and we're proposing, and under the building code schedule, one unit consisted of two rooms, so we're proposing here a hundred dollars for the initial inspection, up to twenty rooms, and then three dollars each additional room, so it is, it is an approximate doubling of the fee in similar increases.
What do you actually have to do, when you do such an inspection, do you have to go through the whole building?
Yeah, you walk through the whole building, mostly the common areas, not the individual rooms, and we're looking at exit lights, emergency lights, door hardware, door operation, fire escapes.
For a lot of safety.
Inspections in the boiler rooms, and just general condition of the building, mostly from an egress point of view is what we're looking at.
Make sure there's no kitchens, that kind of thing?
Not so much, we don't find that as a big problem in dormitories. If we had a lot of lodging houses, yes, but we don't have a lot of those, that's where you find the hot plates and microwaves where they shouldn't be, but we don't have that.
It's a limitation, so we're on those now.
In the dormitories, that's more, and I think the colleges are much more proactive on that today than we were, so we really kind of rely on the college for that part of it. Another increase that I recommended was for the wireless antennas, in that they currently pay, any new sighting of a wireless facility is five hundred dollars per antenna, so I've recommended a change to seven hundred fifty per antenna, and plus the cost of the construction project, to also include that fifteen dollars per thousand on the value of the work. There was a little bit of personal input in that, into that one, in that I think that cell installations are a permanent, I don't want to say blight, but possibly eyesore, necessary evil on the community, so I just felt that it was appropriate that they pay a fee for that privilege, so that was my recommendation there.
And there are also issues relating to those installations of safety and placement alone.
There is, and there's a lot of meetings.
It's all by law, and it's fairly complicated, so...
Yes, yeah, there's a lot of hours in reviewing just the proposal itself. We also recommended a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for the wireless site review committee, which is zero now, and most other towns do charge a fee for that, that type of service. And that's the bulk of it, just one more comment I would like to make, in the beginning of the proposed fee schedule, I took the liberty of writing a lot of general conditions or clarifications as to how we charge fees, because the bylaw currently is a little bit vague on how we apply them, and it's, I think it's important that we be specific, and I think these conditions are important, so that we can better charge applicants more fairly and more evenly, so that...
So, it's transparent?
Yes, and that's what all of that, beginning the general conditions is all about.
And just to point out that you mentioned comparatives, you have shown us comparatives of Brookline, Canton, Norwell, and Hall, just in looking at other communities, to try and give us an idea of what other communities are charging compared to Milton.
And we also, I mean, we, I sort of pulled those at random, but we also looked at, there's a list of ten comparable towns, and I think Brookline is one of them, and I think Canton is also in there. I don't have that list in front of me unfortunately, but I just thought, they're so random.
Winchance.
Yeah, there's such a, there's such a vast difference in everybody's fee schedule that I, I just thought it would be a good idea to pull in some other towns that weren't on that list, just in, if, you can just go onto any town's website and punch up the building department, and you'll see the wide variety of fees.
So, based on your experience, do you think these are fair fees?
I do think they're fair, I think they're fair to the town, and they remain fair to the applicant, like I said, the bulk of our permitting is for one and two family homes, and that fee remains untouched.
Okay.
That being said, Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the recommended revisions to the fee schedule for inspectional services, as presented by the billing inspector, his proposed fee schedule dated three twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, does the board want to pick a date for the implementation of this, or does the billing inspector have a specific date?
If I could just touch a little bit on the computer management system that we're doing, we've been working, we haven't implemented it yet, we have a soft...
Launch date?
Launch date of Monday, this coming Monday, we've spent a lot of time customizing the system to fit the needs of the department, so I think probably May first would be an appropriate effective date.
Okay.
That'll give us time to get them programmed into the system.
Okay.
And by then, we'll have had a couple of weeks working with it, and that soft launch may increase to a little more firm launch.
Okay.
The goal is to eventually be at least ninety percent online, but I see that as six or eight months down the road still, we still need to work with it and make sure we have all the bugs tweaked out of it before we...
I'd like to reopen our vote and amend it to say that the effective may be just May first.
Send that as a term.
Okay, then we'll re-vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. One other thing, we're gonna, I'm presuming that we're gonna be putting this up on our webpage, the new fees?
Yes.
And the date, and maybe we can also, on the front, just draw attention to the fact that there will be new fees effective May first, so that people are aware of that. And I also just wanted to bring up a point while we have you here, is I appreciate the efforts that are being made to enforce the present rules that we have, and also recently, you know, we all have been hearing the news about illegal apartments, and I appreciate the fact that you're, are working hard, along with Jay Bolio, to identify illegal apartments, we don't hopefully have many of them in Milton, but, and while it might be attractive for people thinking they can make a little extra money by renting out a room, or, you know, or helping out a friend, oftentimes, there are tragic consequences when the apartments are set up in such a way that they're not sufficient, you know, egress in case of a fire, or sprinkler systems, or whatever. If somebody is interested in, you know, making their house, renting it out, obviously, they should contact your office, see if there is a possibility within the zoning rules to allow that to happen, and I know that your office is very helpful in giving people information about how to construct something that is safe for people, so we very much appreciate that, and wanted to draw that attention to people as well.
Okay, at present, since the tragedy, the recent tragedy in Quincy, we have two illegal apartments that we're looking at, and probably going to require them removed very, very shortly, we've already ordered them not to be used, directed them not to be used.
But the goal here, yeah, some people think that, you know, that it's punitive, but honestly, it's all about safety, it's all about making sure that people are safe, and I think that tragedy in Quincy is a good example of that, you know, where the goal is to make sure that people are safe, and that's what these rules are about, so we appreciate your efforts.
Great, thank you.
Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you very much, Jim.
And our next contestant, we have John Thompson from the DPW, I want you to come on up to the table.
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
How you doing? I have actually a couple of different speaking points tonight, as far as DPW happenings are going. The first thing I wanted to actually speak about was the DPW Day, our DPW open house, which, which actually, we've held every year for the last four years, this will be our fifth year, and we actually have the open house scheduled this year for May sixteenth, it's a Saturday, from ten AM to one thirty PM, so I guess first and foremost, we just wanted to notify the board, notify the residents that that was the plan. It basically gives residents a chance to come by the DPW yard, you know, learn a little bit about what the department does, we have events for kids, like a, you know, a recycling magician, magic show that we're going to be putting on, we have some different tables that are set up, that they can learn about recycling, learn about our sewer and water programs and things like that, we also park the equipment around the yard, so that the kids can, you know, look at the equipment and climb in and get behind the, you know, the steering wheel, so...
In effect, as Toucha Truck by our kids, it's the Toucha Truck event.
So, and we also have food and refreshments available, so it's really a fun time for everybody, so we really try to, want to encourage everyone to come along, even if it's for just a few minutes, and stop in and say hello. Along those lines, actually, last year, we had the folks from the Milton Bike Advisory Committee, who did their annual bike sale at the DPW Day, and we're going to be running that again as well, and I have Marge Jeffries here to speak on that, and we also have Catherine Reddington here from Sustainable Milton, and she's going to talk a little bit about the rain barrel sale that they'll be running at the DPW Day, so...
Wonderful, well, why don't we have you two come up and talk about those issues, and then we'll have John come back for the, for his additional DPW information, so welcome to the table. And why don't we have Marge, why don't we have you start talking a little bit about the bike sale, which has grown in leaps and bounds since you started that so many years ago.
Yeah, thank you, I'm standing in for Mike Backwell, who's the chairman of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and I'd like to pass around some pictures that you can have a look at, in the beginning, we had it in front of the police station, and so if you want to take a look at these, and then we had the good offices of the Cunningham Park, so then we had a bunch of pictures that we took of these.
Maybe we can start by telling where these bikes come from, how is it that we have these bikes?
Well, and then we have the modern ones, so we can look at those. The bikes come from, originally, the whole project started when I discovered that the police department collected bikes, because they were left around, or they were stolen, or something or other, and they had this large quantity of twenty or thirty bicycles, they were sitting around in the rain, and then they were, sometimes they were taken to the trash, and sometimes they were taken to a wonderful organization called Bikes Not Bombs, which is in Jamaica Plain, and which takes used bikes, they started off in the Nicaraguan war back in those days, way back with the Nicaraguan Contras, you remember all that stuff, and discovered that doctors couldn't, had to walk to their patients, and if they had a bicycle, and they were all too poor to have cars, so we sent, the Bikes Not Bombs sent down bikes to... in the rain. And then they were, sometimes they were taken to the trash. And sometimes they were taken to a wonderful organization called Bikes Not Bombs, which is in Jamaica Plain, and which takes used bikes. They started off in the Nicaraguan war back in those days, way back with the Nicaraguan Contras, you remember all that stuff, and discovered that doctors couldn't, had to walk to their patients. And if they had a bicycle, and they were all too poor to have cars. So we sent, the Bikes Not Bombs sent down bikes to all, and now it's grown to many different countries. And it's, they also have a very interesting program for kids in Jamaica Plain who can earn a bike and who help with renovating the bikes that are delivered to be sent. So that was fine, but they didn't always, weren't always able to take the bikes. So it, I heard about a town, I don't remember which one, in which the police departments auctioned off the bikes, because some of them were very, very nice bikes. And that was nice. So I thought, well, let's, let's have an auction. So for the first couple of years, we had an auction. Then it just sort of devolved into a sale. And then we didn't have, I, I wanted to have these bikes undercover. And Cunningham Park trustees were gracious enough to let us use their parks. And last year, we just overran their parks and they were put in the swimming pool, not in the swimming pool, but in the pump house of the, I mean, it was really a huge operation for the rather elderly people who were taking, dragging these bikes around. So then the happy circumstance of the, of the DPW Open House lent itself. So we then parked ourselves at the open house. And this year, because we had so much money from these bike sales that were collected for the Bicycle Advisory Committee, whose real mission is to make bicycling safe for everybody, and to encourage bicycling, and for all the good reasons you can think of, we had quite a lot of money. So we were able to buy a shed and have it, and with the happy approval of the police chief, we were able to put the shed in their parking lot, or in the corner of their parking lot. And there are probably about forty-five bicycles in there right now, which we will then have Scott from the Bicycle Infirmary, who has been helping us all these years, to make an estimate of how much we should sell these bikes for. Because as I say, some of them are very good, and some of them are not. And there's everything in between. There's children's bikes, there's grown-up bikes, there's racing bikes, there's workhouse bikes, there's everything. So this year, we've planned to, we would like to be able to have the DPW transport the bikes, this year from one place, not Cunningham, not, you know, we were all around the place. So transport the bikes from the police station shed to the DPW, the day before the sale starts. So that, and we will have already marked those bikes according to my plan. And Scott has been very agreeable with this. So he and I will go over there and, and put tags on the bikes and, and mark them for how much. Because last year, we had, we had, we were inundated with bikes. It was just a regular flood of bicycles, early, about between nine and ten on Saturday morning. And we just couldn't price them all. And it was a little unsatisfactory.
Meaning people were still donating bikes?
Yes, yeah.
Now is that, is there any plan for that to happen this year as well? Can people donate bikes?
Well, we, now that there's, at the DPW, I've just been talking with Mr. Thompson. And we, he will allow us to keep the, have a place for the people to come and bring their bikes from, say, two to six on Friday afternoon. So that then, then I hope that Scott will be able to come over and we'll be able to price a lot, any of those bikes. But they still come in on Saturday morning. So we, we will be there between eight and ten Saturday morning, and then the sale begins. And it's a real rush, because people will say, oh, it's, it's, it's quarter of ten, and I've got to go off to somewhere, and I've got to get my bike. Well, you know, it's wonderful. It's a wonderful madhouse. And we are delighted with it. And I think it's a real service to everybody, because we don't put, I, in the end, I think we, I think we had to trash about three bicycles. We gave a lot to the Bikes Not, Bikes Not Bombs. And then somebody told me that day that there was an organization in Cambridge that would take almost any bike. The Bikes Not Bombs want to have sturdy bikes, because they're going to places where the roads aren't good, and so on. So they're not interested in children's bikes or, or racing bikes. But this organization would take anything. So he came and took anything. We like to reserve ten or twelve bikes to start the sale off with, that just didn't happen and get sold for some, any reason. So therefore, that's about what I would like to say, except that the first, last year, we made, oh, can you have my glasses? Would you like that?
Well, we're doing that, just to, just to clarify. So May 15th, if people want to donate bikes, they, bikes in good working order, then they can do so at the DPW yard on the afternoon of May 15th.
Yes.
And then the sale will start promptly at ten on May 16th, as a part of the DPW Day.
But they can also come in between eight and ten Saturday morning.
And look at them.
And, and bring their bikes that they, that they want to donate.
Oh, okay. You'll still accept donations on the day of the sale for the first couple of hours in the morning?
Because people want to donate a bike, and then they want to buy one. So why have them have two, two things?
Okay, great.
Last year, two thousand and seven, we made eighteen hundred dollars and forty-five cents.
Oh, that's true.
And last year, we were about fifteen hundred and sixty dollars. And we, the average bike was selling for twenty-five dollars. So you can just tell that really and truly-
And they're beautiful bikes. I mean, my son bought a, a bike that had, you know, pegs on it for tricks or something. I'm not even sure. But it was really, it was great to see the number of kids that showed up and-
Oh, tremendous number. Because after all, they outgrow their bikes. So we have a lot of children's bikes, and we have them this year.
But there were, there were adult bikes as well, you know?
Oh, absolutely, adult bikes.
Men's bikes, I mean, all different, some racing, mountain, I mean, a variety of different kinds, yeah.
Girls, boys, male, female, all kinds, absolutely all kinds. And some I've never seen before in my life.
And you, you mentioned Scott of Dave's Bike Infirmary, too, which I know has been very instrumental in helping with, to, to, you know, in some cases, actually helping out fix some minor details on the bikes as well, as, as pricing them for us and giving them ideas.
There will be a small core of, of people from the Bike Advisory Committee who will come in and do some small adjustments. But I would, I would say that it, the bike does not have to be in working order. Because people can bring them over to the Bikes Not Infirmary, you know, Bikes Infirmary, to get them fixed up at a small price. No matter how much you have to fix up these bikes, they will never equal the, the original cost of a good bike.
Good point, yeah.
I mean, there's no amount of maintenance that could do that. So I would urge people to bring a bike in almost any condition. Totally rusty, chains rusty, everything. Those are the one things that we really can't fix.
We can't fix, right. So if it's really-
Total rust. I mean, everything rusty. Chain rusty doesn't matter, because we can replace the chain.
Okay, I'm sorry, John.
Marge, do we have any of this information up on the website?
I can't answer that, because I haven't looked at it recently. But we certainly will be putting one, some up.
And maybe John, too, on the DPW site as well?
And there will be a banner as well. I think that Mike is looking for a banner to put the dates on.
We actually have that right here on our, on our agenda, item seventeen. Talk a little bit about the, the bike sale then. And there apparently is a banner advertising Bike Month of May, and also-
It is, May is Bike Month, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And as you know, we're, we're working toward making Milton a bicycle-friendly community, which is, takes a whole lot of work, and is a very interesting thing to do, and will upgrade us a lot.
And while you're here, we should mention, too, that the, I know that the N-Star is going to be doing bike painting along 138, the bike path, which was part of the mitigation that we entered into. They're going to be starting that very soon. And I know the DPW, John has been working as well, about getting the, with Mike Blackwell and the members of your committee, about having, I think there's agreed symbols now that are going to be painted on the present bike paths that we have in town as well, rather than having signs up above to have the actual symbols on the, on the road as well. So we're, you know, right up there. We're, we're a bike-friendly community. And we're going to be a more bike-friendly community after the May 16th, you know, event, I'm sure.
And there will be a lot of children's things going on with bicycles, teaching children and leading children to and from bikes that Eric Ask is doing. So it's, it's, this committee has become a wonderful committee. And with the cooperation that we've been having with the DPW, and the selectmen, and the police, and everybody, it's just wonderful. A lot, a very far cry from nineteen seventy-five, when I started trying to do something.
Well, thanks for keeping the torch lit. Your time has come. Thanks, Marge.
Can we just move to do the banner announcing?
Absolutely. So we have it on, it's item seventeen C. This was a letter from Mike Blackwell, email letter, announcing that there's going to be the Used Bike Sale the weekend of May 16th to 17th, again in conjunction with the DPW Open House. All funds that are raised go to the further bike safety and education programs in Milton. Mentions that they have a large yellow banner, a vinyl banner that reads, "May is National Bike Month. Share the Road," and includes the date for the bike sale. Also mentions the Rotary Club's Bike Race, which will be coming up soon as well. I think that's May 3rd, or that might be Blue Hills, that's Blue Hills, May 3rd, which we would like permission to hang at the Randolph-Redsdale intersection. So since we have this request, I think Paula, you're the coordinator for timing. So we would try, and they're asking specifically that it go to the Randolph-Redsdale intersection if that, there's time and space available. So I'd entertain a motion to allow that banner to be placed.
Send it through, second.
All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. So you can go back to your committee and say your banner's been approved.
Can I just say one word about Share the Road? Share the Road is for roads like Canton Avenue that can't possibly have a painted line, a painted lane. It's impossible to put something like that on Canton Avenue, for example. And there are a lot of roads like that. So there will be a distinct Share the Road logo, that, to remind people that bikes and cars have to coexist on these roads, and for, for cars to remember that bikes are going to be using the road.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks very much for your time.
I have seen you many times now in Canton Avenue.
Live on it. What else can I do?
Thank you. And now we also have your representative from Sustainable Milton, welcome.
Thank you. I'm just here to talk about the rain barrels.
Great.
We are doing it again this year in conjunction with the DPW. And the Great American Rain Barrel Company in Hyde Park are offering rain barrels in four colors at a discounted rate. And the beauty of this is, you can order the rain barrels and then pick them up at the DPW yard during the DPW Open House. And that makes it very convenient. You can order the rain barrel and the diverter, which makes it very efficient to get the water into your rain barrel in two different sizes. This information and the ordering information is all on the Sustainable Milton website. You can put Sustainable Milton into Google, and with the first site that comes up, you can click on that, and then you can click on the green rain barrel. And that'll bring you to the ordering information.
And the costs for the rain barrels?
Well, we have two different rain barrels. And they're sixty-gallon polyethylene shipping drums. They're very, actually very attractive. I'm, you know, they're good stuff. And they're well thought out. It's not like the old days, where you just put a barrel under your spout. It's, it's not like that at all. They, they have a screw-on lid, mosquito screen, threaded spigot for hose attachment, a drain plug, an overflow valve, an additional hole with a plug for linking barrels together. So you can join multiple barrels for additional capacity here. And two options for spigot placement, either two inches above the ground for a hose, or you can go up to another one at fourteen inches for your watering can. And then if you have the diverter, I'll tell you the prices. The diverter would make it very efficient. And apparently, it's the most efficient method to protect and channel the water from the downspout into the barrel. It's called a Save the Rain Diverter. And it fits onto the downspout with two simple cuts, opens for water collection, closes when the barrel is full or in the off-season. And the Save the Rain Diverter is offered in the two sizes for the different, you know, two-by-three diverter for the rectangular downspout, and the three-by-four diverter for the, for the round downspouts. It's all written up. They start, so prices including tax and delivery, which, which delivery is to the Milton DPW yard. And then are sixty dollars for a painted barrel, green, gray, or brown, fifty-five dollars for an unpainted, black or gray, based on availability. Then you can get the twenty-five dollar for a large diverter, or twenty dollars for a small diverter. And pickup, and ordering has to be done by May 1, like five o'clock on May 1, because we need to arrange to, you know, have the, the rain barrels available, have them delivered before. They're delivered about, you know, within the week before. I arranged that with, with, with the huge help of DPW. And they have them right there. People drive in, they've already taken care of paying for it by calling the Great American Rain Barrel Company, and mentioning Sustainable Milton and the DPW yard, that that's where they're going to do their pickup. And it's part of that event. So that's why they can get the discount.
Oh, okay.
So I would suggest they go to the Sustainable Milton website, click on the green rain barrel, and off you go. It's on the site, as of today, maybe last night, but definitely today. And it's a good event. Quite a few people wanted them. And I, I hear that the DPW's gotten a couple of calls already. So-
Good. We bought two last year.
Well, they're, they're really good.
We did. I mean, it, you can use it to water your lawn, you can use it for a variety of different, I mean, the occasional child in our house got watered from the rain barrels.
And you don't have to worry about wasting water. And you don't have to worry about paying for, you know, the water that you're using. And I believe it's an, one inch of rainfall on a twelve-hundred square foot roof will yield over seven hundred gallons of water.
Wow.
And people use sixty percent more water in the summer, obviously, to water whatever. So I, it's a great thing.
It's a good deal, because for the price of the barrel, you're lowering your water bills as well as conserving water, which is all good.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, you've got the spigot attached to your barrel. You're not out there, you know, cranking it up. And also, the barrel, I believe, will fit in the back seat of just a regular old car, because I'm picking one up for Earth Day to show it. So it, I believe it fits in the back seat. I'll find out for sure, but no. So it's a good thing.
Well, thank you. And thanks to everyone at Sustainable Milton for all the efforts that you guys have done.
Thank you very much, for your support, all of you and the DPW. We, we couldn't do half of this without you. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, John? And you didn't mention that there's food at DPW Day either.
There's always food at DPW Day.
That's a big deal. That's a draw right there for a lot of folks. That's right.
One other quick event I wanted to just announce, that's also being run by Sustainable Milton actually, is Green Day, which is going to be on Saturday, May 2nd. And Margaret Carols is actually running that event. She wasn't able to make it tonight. But, and I don't have all the details for that event. But basically, they, and I think there's going to be an article coming up in the Milton Times about it. But basically, they organize cleanup groups to go around town, and sort of a spring cleanup in different areas around town, to rake up leaves, pick up trash, and just basically beautify, beautify the town. So that's a great event as well. And we, I was actually hoping to have the board tonight declare May 2nd also Arbor Day in Milton. And we're, we plan on holding a tree planting ceremony at a yet-to-be-named location. But by declaring it and having-
We have a list.
Yeah, I know. We all have lists of places where trees could go.
We have a long list. So I don't, finding a location shouldn't be too hard. But by having an annual Arbor Day celebration, it actually enables the town to maintain its Tree City USA status with the National Arbor Day Foundation, which is actually a really elite status. And it kind of, it's great. It shows Milton's commitment to, to, you know, trees and to staying green, so.
Great. So actually, you're asking us to take a vote? Do we have a motion to declare May 2nd Arbor Day?
Is that a motion, Madam Chairman?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Green Day is a great opportunity for people. I know that all the PTOs, sponsor groups, lots of different, yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity to meet people, too, for, for new people to Milton. I mean, we have a lot of new families that have come into Milton. It's a really great opportunity to meet your neighbors, or to, you know, get involved in some of these different community groups. So I think we'll probably put on our website at least the date and time and information. But, you know, check, there'll be, I'm sure, information in the kids' backpacks about it. That's a ni, a nice way for parents to find out about it. But otherwise, get up in the morning and drive around Milton, and you will find groups of people working at a lot of different locations in town, you know, with rakes in their hands and gloves on, you know, their hands. And just stop, park your car, come out. It's a great way to meet people. And it's really amazing. I think, I think our town is a very clean town. But you, it's amazing, after this beautification day, how much better it looks, you know, whether it's, you know, people clearing weeds, or raking, or, or little bits of trash around town. But it's really incredible how great it looks. And everybody feels good, too. It's a great feel-good day. So hopefully, people will, will come out for it again this year.
I had a good time talking about, actually, no, but it was just my sneakers and my tree bro.
Oh, yeah. That's always a good one, too.
I know. It's only supposed to be done in a certain way. But there are lots of things that are fun that you wouldn't get a kid to do otherwise.
John, does the DPW still go around and pick up, not pick up, but remove the big logs and whatnot that might get into the, the marsh areas?
Um, you know, I'm not sure. I believe that we probably do. I think it's probably an annual thing, probably in the spring.
Right.
I don't know that for sure. But I could certainly, I could certainly look into that.
Yeah, I don't know if they used to do it every year, but it was at least every other year. You'd be surprised at how many big, you know, not just stumps, but logs of, of trees-
Fall right in.
-end up in the, in the swamp areas.
Sure.
We went around, one summer, I worked for the DPW, and we, it was the bicentennial year. And we, we got a whole bunch of the, it was that bonfire that they had at the academy, I think it was July 4th. They, we, we got them out of the, the marshes, because they thought that the salt in the, in the logs would make it all different colors. We had this, it had to be twenty-foot high. Remember that? Red Law, I worked with Red Law- had to be twenty-foot high. Remember that? Red Law, I worked with Red Law and we put that together. It was, it was really something. You could see from, you could see from miles.
Sounds good, but I bet you can't do it now.
I know, I know.
I know, you probably can't.
But they started doing it every year and I thought it was a good thing to kind of free up the river flow down.
Right, right. And I know in years past, we've had a pine tree brook kind of cleanup contract. We've got money from the state every year to kind of go through and work our way up the brook. That funding has since dried up, so I think it's probably a good idea to at least make a check to make sure that there's nothing significantly blocking the flow.
Great. Now I understand we also have a recommendation here on another contract?
Correct. That was my next talking point. I wanted to, actually, the DPW seeking approval to award a construction contract for water main replacement. The, the project is actually, would be year four of the DPW's ten-year capital improvement program for water. And we received six bids for the project on April 3, the lowest of which was Tom Gioso Construction of Rockland, Mass. at one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents. And I just wanted to make a quick note that it was a, it was a rather large bid. It's usually about, it's actually about twice as big as the amount of work that we usually put out for this type of contract. And one of the reasons we did that was actually to have a, to have a large project shovel-ready in case we, you know, we could apply for federal stimulus funding to do the project, which we have done. At this point, the, the funding is still unknown. So what we are recommending at this point is that we move forward with the project with just what we have for local funding and award the, the, sort of the priority areas of that contract as bid. That would, that would include an award for water main construction on Reed Still Road between Randolph Ave. and Pleasant Street, on Pleasant Street between Reed Still Road and Edgehill Road, on Horton Place, and on Houston Avenue between Blue Hills Parkway and Thatcher Street. And we're recommending a, a contract approval in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents to the local...
Should we add Horton Place to this motion?
Yeah, because it's not listed in our motion. We have Pleasant Street area, well, maybe that's Houston Avenue.
So that's Reed Still to...
Yeah. Pylon Road and Taff Road?
Pylon Road.
Pylon Road and Taff Road?
I'd make a motion, Madam Chairman, to approve the recommendation of the Assistant Town Engineer to award a contract in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents, which is very important, ninety-one cents, to Tom Gioso Construction, Inc. of Rockland, under year four of the DPW ten-year capital improvement program for the construction of water mains for the Pleasant Street area, Houston Avenue, Pylon Road, Taff Road, and Horton Place.
Correct, except under this recommendation, we wouldn't actually be doing any work on Pylon and Taff Road. Those were part of a, those were part of an alternative bid that, at this point, we don't have funding secured as of yet.
Okay, so we need to...
Okay, so why don't I just say Pleasant Street area, Houston Avenue, and Horton Place? Does that cover it?
Okay, great. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you very much.
And the last item I wanted to discuss with the board tonight was DPW's solid waste program. As part of the solid waste program, currently DPW provides recycled bins and compost bins to residents at, at basically wholesale cost for, for what we buy them for in bulk. Over the previous few years, as material costs and manufacturing costs have risen and the fees that the DPW charges stayed the same, we're at a point now where we're, we're basically, we're selling them for less than what the town actually pays for them. So...
So we're losing money on the deal right now.
We're losing money on them currently. So what I wanted to request tonight was that some of the fees could be adjusted for recycled bins and for compost bins, just basically to get them to a point where they cover the costs, the purchasing costs. We're requesting that these prices be raised effective July 1 for the new fiscal year, that recycled bins would be increased to seven dollars and fifty cents each, as opposed to the five dollars that they're sold for now. And that compost bins are increased from thirty-five dollars currently to a price of forty-two dollars each.
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you.
There is one other item, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I just, and the one other thing I wanted to mention real quickly, I just wanted to inform the board that the DPW is currently looking at, for the solid waste program, the possibility of switching from trash stickers, which we use now, to, to the possibility of switching to customized trash bags, which basically residents, and I brought some samples along from other towns, but residents would basically, instead of buying a trash sticker, buy, I'll stand up, buy a trash bag. And this is sort of what they look like. They come in various sizes. They're custom with the town seal. They're hefty bags with, you know, drawstrings and, and, you know, actually, a lot of towns are moving to this sort of program. And would basically be looking to sell them for the same price as trash stickers. You know, this is a, this is a thirty-two gallon bag, which essentially would fit in any large trash barrel, which is currently, you know, for the three-dollar stickers, we say is enough to pay for the disposal of one trash barrel now. But it gives residents a little bit more flexibility in that if they don't generate a lot of trash, they could also purchase these fifteen-gallon smaller bags for, basically for half the price. That's just an example of what that looks like. And basically, towns that are moving towards this sort of program, using the bags instead of the stickers, what they're actually seeing is that they're seeing a, actually, significant reduction in annual solid waste tonnage on a town-wide level, almost sometimes as much as twenty percent. And basically, they're saying that it, basically, the use of these bags promotes, promotes a lot more recycling. And at the same time, it, it eliminates the instances where trash is being picked up without stickers. So at the same time, as, as you're reducing your trash tonnage, you're also increasing your revenues from the trash stickers, which can potentially add up to a, a big savings in the magnitude of a couple hundred, hundred thousand dollars. So I just wanted to kind of throw this out there, that this is something that we are looking at. I don't have any hard, hard numbers as of yet, but I'll certainly keep the board apprised of kind of anything we, that we find moving forward in terms of what kind of savings we might be looking at.
Yeah, well, it addresses, I mean, I know that the issue of trash becomes a very touchy one to a lot of people. But it does address the concerns that some seniors particularly have called me about, saying that they don't fill a huge bag. They don't want to have to pay three dollars, you know, for a tiny bag when their neighbor is paying three dollars to throw out a larger bag of trash. So that addresses that issue, because they, they can have smaller, you know, they have the choice of the half-price smaller bag. And it also probably, I know it addresses the issue that some people claim that stickers are lost or disappear or, you know, whatever, and their trash doesn't get picked up. And this way, you know, it's, it's hard to suggest that, that if they don't have the bag, it doesn't get picked up. Is the goal to have these at all of the same locations that presently sell the stickers?
Exactly.
If it happens? I mean, again, it's still, you're still exploring this, I understand.
Right. But basically, they'd be for sale at all the same places that, that the stickers are sold now. We would actually still sell our annual stickers for barrels.
Okay.
So that any residents that prefer to come in and kind of prepay, rather than having to make a weekly or bi-weekly trip to buy bags or stickers, they, they will still have that option available to them. And it actually saves a little bit of labor on the town side, too, because the company that provides the bags actually will deliver directly to the stores. And basically, that cuts out the town as a middleman, because right now, basically, we're delivering stickers to store, kind of the stores on a weekly basis. So it helps out a little bit in that aspect, too.
And arguably, it saves money in that people don't have to then buy stickers and trash bags.
Correct.
It's all one and the same. Okay.
Well, I remember sitting in McCurry, that's all I can tell you.
Oh, yeah?
And they were universally used and they have a very high recycling level, I mean, a hundred percent recycling. I mean, it was amazing. But that's when I first saw them. And that was, that was a number of years ago. And I've seen them around a little bit, but I just, if it reduces the amount of likelihood that the company's going to pick up trash or a sticker on, in my neighborhood crying.
Would they, would they be required to put that, that in a barrel? Or could they just leave it out?
You could leave them, you could, you could have it in a barrel or you could leave it right out on the curb.
Okay.
And I think, Madam Chair, just to, you know, kind of reiterate some of the points, you know, one is, we have a great recyclable program in Milton anyways. Milton is probably one of the most, you know, it's probably one of the top five communities in Massachusetts for recycling. You know, we, we can still improve on that. Certainly, you know, every once in a while, someone forgets to put the trash sticker on, you know, on the trash, puts the trash out there. They come home from work, trash is still there. They call the DPW and, you know, it's not going to get picked up. And this would prevent that, you know, mistaken event where a person forgets to put trash. Also helps, you know, smaller households who don't, you know, they, they may put out one trash bag every two weeks. This would allow them the option of having a smaller bag and putting that out at a lesser price. So there's a savings there. So there's, you know, it's a, it would be a, as the board thinks about this, as the DPW does more research on it, you know, it, it kind of enhances the current program. We have a good program, but, you know, could always use some improvements and this would improve it and eliminate some of the other concerns. And yes, there would be the, the regular year sticker that you put on the barrels so you don't have to go and transfer over. And if you think about the cost of a three-dollar sticker, plus you have to go get the bag today, and the price staying the same, there is a cost, you know, savings right there. So I think it's something the board should, you know, really give some consideration to and will get better pricing for it, but it would, I think, enhance the program that we commonly use.
What are we terms, I know that you're still researching this, but do you have a goal of, of when you could come back to us and if, and at least we could make a decision as to whether we're going to go in this direction or not?
I, well, actually, if we do look to implement it, I, I would think a, a good time to do it would probably be at the start of the new fiscal year. So maybe I could plan on coming back sometime in, in May or June before the start of the fiscal year with some more information and...
If you're going to come back in June, you'd already have to have them ordered, right?
Uh, it, well, yeah, that's a good point. I don't, I don't know what the lead time is to get the actual town seal and everything imprinted on the bag. But certainly, maybe towards the end of May might be a good, a good time to...
We need to give people plenty of warning because if you don't change the sticker fee, I guess you can still use the previous year's stickers or maybe you can. I'm not, I mean, that's always a problem if, if there's any transition. People need to use up their old stickers and we need to...
Right.
Right.
...that with good notice and do it in a way that's fair.
Sure. And I know in other municipalities where they do switch to the bags, they usually have a grace period of a month or two months where you can use both the bags and the stickers to, to give people plenty of time to get used to the new system.
Or you can turn in your sticker and get a bag.
Except, will the town be selling the bags, too, or just...
The town would have the bags for sale here as well.
So you could do that in town?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's interesting. I'm glad to look into it.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, yes?
Could I ask a question about, we're trying to get rid of plastic bags, that the whole tenor of things these days is getting rid of that, of plastic bags. Are these biodegradable? I mean, what, are we now abandoning the town with all these bags?
That's one of the items we're looking into. There is that, that concern has been raised and the company is looking into whether they're, you know, biodegradable, recyclable type of plastic that's, you know, go in and be reused.
I will say that I think people should use the sticker. I mean, I'm a great devote, I'm very fond. I get the annual sticker. I think it's much easier. I always use a barrel. I don't use bags anymore than a five hundred.
And that'll always be an option, yeah.
A lot of people don't do that, or, you know, they might have the smaller amount and in that case, I mean, you really don't have a lot of choice. I mean, if you leave a whole barrel out, even if it's half-full, you still need a sticker for three dollars. This offers you the option of a smaller bag and a smaller amount. But I, you know, anything we can find out about that would be helpful.
That's part of the research. So we just want to get the discussion going, get the board to think about possibility and...
I, I'd be really interested in the data from other communities that have done this to see what they reduced as far as, you know, trash flow into, into landfills. The other thing is I'd be really interested in finding out the experience of other towns vis-à-vis some of these questions that have been asked.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, when you think about it, we do have leash laws now. And so you don't have the roving neighborhood dog who would attack the trash.
Trash the trash, yeah.
You know, I, I don't want to see, you know, trash bags open anymore.
So we want biodegradable bags that are dogged.
In brief.
Sure, okay, okay.
Let's work on that. Thanks, John.
We can work on that.
Thank you, John.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Coming in, we appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll see you at DPW Day.
Yes, I'll listen to you. Thank you. Next item we have on our agenda, we actually have a budget discussion. And I don't know if David Grab is going to be here.
He's here.
Oh, I didn't see you behind. Thank you. Thanks.
My heat.
So we'll welcome our town accountant, David Grab. I understand you've been doing a, busy doing a five-year forecast for us.
I guess tonight we'll be looking at a little bit of history and a little bit of the future, hopefully. In front of you, you do have what we've put together and I'd like to make sure that I thank you, Bagan, town administrator, Kevin Murn, for assisting me in putting this information together, putting it in a manner that you could actually see. Most of my spreadsheets, some of the numbers are so tiny, because I use so many of them, that it became difficult to read. And what I have done, and I believe I emailed all of you, the actual spreadsheet that this information is tied and linked to. There's a lot of data and I'll hand you out, I printed out the copy of what's the data behind it. You don't have to look at it today, but you can look at it at another time.
Thank you.
What this is, is a compilation of six years of historical data. And then on top of that, I added another three years of historical data within those six years to come up with some sort of method that would provide me with a percentage basis of increases and decreases, which is very few, of all local areas within our town government. And I specified certain captions, general government, public safety, education. So there's a lot of items that I have put together in order to mix and match certain groupings of departments, Health and Human Services, Library, POCS, and Recreations, so that it wouldn't be overly taxed to look at each and every department. We're not looking at one department per se. We're looking at a total and we're looking at understanding where we're going to be, possibly, within a five-year period. It is an estimate. It's a projection. It's my projection. I could be wrong. It's going to happen that something is going to look wrong and some things are going to look right. You're going to ask, why is this number here? It's simply, I was able to use a lot of different information and compile it into certain buckets that would provide you with these details. Now, one of the good things is the timing of this. The warrant committee has essentially put together a balanced budget with an override, the override figure being three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Now, using that information, I could take that and provide you with, if we had that amount, the best-case scenario. And of course, the best-case scenario was a balanced budget. A middle case, medium-case scenario, which we determined to look at a fifty percent of that override and use one point six eight eight as an override. And you can see the other difference being monies that would have to come out of the budgets to balance. So that would be a medium-case scenario. I'm actually using the revenue projections from the warrant as given, and the only difference being, of course, is the tax levy based upon any override. And with no override, as you can see, the difference being exactly the override amount of three million, three seventy-six, one oh four, which would balance the budget, because we would be out of balance without that override. And that would require all of these recommended FY two thousand and ten figures to be reduced by that amount.
And that would be assuming, you know, those two, three, those three cases, I'll assume that, you know, state aid would stay the same for the, you know, for the three scenarios, local receipts would stay the same, and other available funds would stay the same. So the only thing that would change would be the override amount.
Correct.
And then the impact...
Were you able to analyze those numbers from House One?
We, we are analyzing those numbers, but again, this, you know, we, most times, you know, most towns go with the governor's budget, wait for the, you know, the House budget, the Senate budget, and then the combination. Then, you know, but some of those, and I do have a, I think, a handout for the board about, you know, what the impact... do have a, I think, a handout for the board about, you know, what the impact of the House budget is right now that was released yesterday on the tax day.
Although it's worth noting that we didn't go with the governor's budget because, entirely because we wrote in a higher cut on state aid than the governor's budget had, because we didn't assume that the taxing pieces would go into effect.
Yes, the sales tax on the hotel motels.
The town has always, and, you know, the selectmen, certainly the market, we've always taken a conservative view on revenue, and have been, you know...
This cut, this cut in state aid, $425 million, is approximately the cut in state aid proportionally that we've already calculated in our budget, I believe, because it's the cut you'd have to have if you didn't have the new revenue.
That's right.
Right, exactly.
Is that right?
It might even be a little bit higher, because I think the, because a billion dollars in the, for '09, the billion dollars, you know, resulted in about a $400 and some thousand for the town of Milton. So we're probably, the $400,000 represent about, you know, maybe $200,000 to the town of Milton. But, you're right, you know, we didn't count, you know, hotel or meal taxes in possible revenue for FY 10.
Well, you shouldn't. We don't have any restaurants, and we don't have any hotels.
But the governor was going to, he was going to assess, you know, local communities could do it, and then he was going to allow the state to do another one on top of it, and the state one was going to be divvied up like lottery receipts.
So let's just clarify for people who are hearing all these numbers, that the procedure that our town accountant has gone through is taking a look from now till 2014, I think, and just taking out, taking a look at what the increased expenditures have been, and looking from year to year, presuming everything else remains the same, what we would be looking at for the next few years in terms of whether, basically in terms of expenditures, how we have increased expenditures, and looks at that on a case-by-case projection, best-case, medium-case, worst-case projection for the next five years.
Can I ask a question? I'm not sure, I understand what you're doing each year. What you're doing is you're saying, well, let's say we're operating with our non-contingent budget, that we're going to be looking at a town meeting, then you're saying that next year, the projected difference between our revenue and our expenditures will be X. And if you were to get the, to get the public to approve an override, you've projected what you think a deficit would be, it would not be next year. And in worst cases, if you don't get the override, then you've got a deficit, you have a balanced budget for this year, but you have a lot of cuts, and then you're looking at what you think you would have as a difference or a deficit next year going into the budget process. I don't understand why you have the middle number, because it isn't any number that we're using. I just question why it's done that way.
It's part of the, you know, it's part of our financial policy.
I know we've worked at it.
Yes. We've tried to give, you know, we try to take a snapshot of three different potential views, and rather than doing one where you've got your best case, because we're always going to hope for the best, you know, with increased revenues, you know, state aid and the like, we also want to point out, you know, the differences, you know, in Milton particularly, and it's been said oftentimes, and we said a lot more now between now and town meetings, that Milton relies on the fact that we need an operational override every so many years, and we were trying to put some context to that meaning. You know, you put out a number of like $3.37 million, and you can get the warrant committee to put up a display similar to what was just shown on television, highlighting where those, you know, those funds would go, those expenditures, if you will. And we all know what the worst-case scenario is, you know, you don't get the override, and you have to do something else. But we also want to take that median point of what would happen if, you know, you know, there wasn't a successful override at 3.37, or a determination by the board of selectmen that, you know, maybe a smaller amount of money might be more palatable, given that. And then we spread that out over the five years. So we start off with a good scenario, and again, these are projections, and I go, I guess most people would say, you know, right now, in the way the economy is, three months' prediction is very difficult, let alone five years. But it is important, I think it's important in the financial plan, and to kind of at least think about long-term, think about your expenditures, and how you control your expenditures, and...
I understand what you're doing, it's just that, you know, the engineering of how you would fund this half-measure, I don't know how you do it, because you go into town meeting with a contingent, non-contingent budget with no middle ground.
Well, you're not asking town meeting, we're just, we're just...
You know what, I think the value of it is to look at all of the years that you're going forward.
This is not the warrant.
You do it, it's a snapshot, and basically what it tells me, and I know you're going to explain this, but I mean, what, you look at an override year, and the first question you ask is, well, are we going to have to do another override next year if we pass a $3 million override this year? Well, who knows for sure? Because state aid could be decreased, or something else could happen, or revenues could down, could down. You've made certain assumptions that if we got an override, and you've made certain assumptions about revenues and state aid and so forth, and you've projected that there would not be a deficit in our budget next year if we got the override this year. That's just a projection, but that's what you're telling us. And you're even looking into 2012 and saying, it doesn't look to you as if we would have a deficit that year either, but by the following year, which would be 2013, we would begin to have a deficit, we wouldn't be able, revenues wouldn't meet expenditures. And so then you go back down, just go down to the bottom scenario, which is we don't get any, we have no override, we have the budget that we're dealing with as our non-contingent budget, that was a difference of $3,376,104 between what we really would like to have to run our town and what we would actually have. We would have to cut our budget by that amount. Then, next year, you're projecting a deficit again, but actually, it's on, it's on top of that, essentially, it would be further cuts. It's a little bit of a smaller number, it's like $2,600,000, and it's almost as much for the middle situation where you did partially, a partial override. And then you just go on to the following years, and as you might expect, the difference between expenditures and revenues gets bigger and bigger, assuming the same projections. The projections are based on the way we're operating this year. So obviously, you know, your deficit's going to get bigger and bigger if you don't do an override eventually, or you don't have another source of funds. And so your government's actually going to have to shrink, because you're not going to be, you're going to have to cut by those larger and minor amounts. But the value of this, in part, I think, and the reason we talked about doing it as a policy, was to try to project what might happen if we were to try to add additional funds in a given year, and see what would happen the next year and the year after. It's just a projection. And like most projections, projections are predictions, it's only as good as every assumption that you make.
Right.
And everything, including state aid, is an assumption.
It's fluid.
But if you project that we would remain in the same position, relatively speaking to the position we're in this year in terms of revenues, is that what we're assuming pretty quickly? You're saying it looks like we might be able to, you know, we should at least, according to your projection, be able to get a balanced budget without seeking a substantial amount of increased funding. That's where I see the value of trying to do this. Not that it's a clear and sure prediction that that will happen at all, but that this amount of money represents that achievement in terms of at least a level scenario in terms of revenues. Now, the middle number is interesting, because we talk about different numbers all the way through our budget process. If we're going to ask for more funding, you know, what should we actually ask for? Because frankly, the requests we get are always more than what we even ask for in a contingent budget. There are always more, and we always have to whittle them down. And then when it comes to trying to go out, and ask the electorate whether they'll vote for something, it's a very difficult question, as to, you know, what question should even be put out there, and what has any likelihood of succeeding. This year in particular is very difficult because of the economy. But it's still better to have some information, and I think that's why this is valuable. I know it's a lot of work for you to do, and I'm sure, I've talked too much, and I just wanted to know, what else you could say about your...
Along with the revenue, you have, you have to look at the expenditures. And the assumption, and I know that David's put a lot of work into this, is that he took a five-year, he took a seven-year, a five-year, and a three-year average of every single department, and then got to a median point, and then projected that expenditure over time. And what's important to note there is, along with the possibility that if your revenue declines, you can't have your expenditures increase. You know, you could, you could double up with the decline in revenue and, you know, and the increase in expenditures, you're actually making, you know, the worst-case scenario, you know, the possibility. And I think we have to be very careful, you know, to make sure that the town departments understand, and I know the department heads do, and appreciate the fact that, you know, you can't have, in any given year in Milton, 6% increases in your department budgets. That just is not, you know, your average is about 3.2 or somewhere around that. When you start getting into 6% or even in 5%, you, no matter how your revenue comes in in this town, you're just not going to be able to keep track. And if you roll it out in your best-case scenario, you'd be ending up looking for an override in FY 13, or possibly FY 12, if expenditures increase.
But the interesting thing about taking a six-year average, which we do for a number of different things that we look at, and we're looking at trends, we look at it for utilities, for example, and that kind of thing, is that it does incorporate increased costs that the town has undertaken over that six-year period. So it's not a flat line or anything. It just takes what we actually spent, so that includes negotiated salary increases, that includes utility cost increases, and everything else that has to go into our budget, and then it averages it out, and you take an average number. And, you know, we've talked about doing these projections with those, you know, people who give us advice about managing finances, and with our ratings agencies and things like that, and this is the best, I mean, they think it's a good idea to do this. This is about the best you can do in terms of trying to do projections. So it's not perfect, but it's better than adding no information.
Yeah, it also carries...
And, you know, it's something that the more information you have, the more you can communicate to a department head who's trying to manage his own budget, and the extent to which a department head can look back over a six-year period and evaluate expenditures, I think the better understanding everybody has of what our constraints are, unless we have a substantial new source of income. But it's a reasonable constraint, because it's based on history, and we've operated that way, and we stayed afloat that way.
It does seem to show, too, the thought that every so often, we'd still have to have an override. I mean, even best-case scenario is every, I mean, that follows along, I know that Kevin Sorji has spoken on this at length, but every so often, depending, based on how we operate in the town, the restraints that we have in terms of revenue projections, the fact that we, most of our revenue comes from property taxes, it looks as if, this seems to follow along that pattern of every three years or so, even best-case scenario, every three years, even best-case scenario, an override passes, that is sufficient to fund, you know, to kind of catch us up. You still wind up every three years or so with an override, even best-case scenario.
Which state, see here, is this, it's not completely up to date, I guess.
That's the same figure that you were giving me, that we use in our budget.
Okay, so it doesn't take the tax.
But again, this also, just to emphasize the fact, it presumes state aid stays relatively level. And that's something that, you know, we're seeing, for example, this coming year, a drastic reduction in state aid.
It also looks at local receipts.
Which are fluid as well, yeah.
So you can have historical trends, and then you can have dramatic changes that can occur, and that's why assumptions behind a projection are always up to...
Well, the good thing is I have a good base in FY 10 to start with, and now this is not how the warrant will be printed in FY 11 or FY 12. These are, again, compilations of information, however it's spread out. I do presume, and I think I presume accurately, that with an override of $3.3 million, we should be able to get through FY 12 without an override until FY 13. Now, again, anything could happen, I don't have a crystal ball, so...
But then also, there is the cautionary tale, that that presumes that, you know, departments don't ramp up to their absolute maximum or beyond a 3% increase in that year, because if that should happen, if the expenditures go that high, then all bets are off, and you wind up with having to have an override much sooner.
And there is adjustment in these, in this spreadsheet for wage increases, on average, spread out, and if you do the six-year snapshot, at least one, maybe two of those years had a, you know, an override, hopefully a successful override as a component in that, and that's kind of factored into all of these. So it is very important, and I think that the telling point is the fact that this community was very quick in dealing with, you know, the cuts in the state aid for this fiscal year. We were able to get out to a quick start, you know, the board was on top of it using, you know, the information that we're constantly working with, with the town accountant, to try to project, and then we had our special town meeting way before other communities were just kind of, there are still a few floundering around on how they're going to handle this year, the budgets, reductions in state aid. And by doing this, I think we say on top of, you know, potential scenarios, we're able to predict with a little bit more certainty. Again, you know, it's hard to gauge, and like I said earlier, you know, three months out is now becoming a bit of a problem, and you listen to the news, you know, they say, you know, one minute, you know, FY 10 is going to be, you know, start to improve, and now, then next minute it's FY 11. But we're prepared, and I think that's one of the good things about doing this exercise is preparation.
We don't have to cut those budgets now with two and a half months left in the fiscal year. But if you take a look at this MMA notice here about what programs were not included in the, in the House budget, Level Fund the pilot program, which we had hoped for an increase in, Level Fund Chapter 70, cut $45 million from Special Ed circuit breakup, you know, eliminate community policing, I don't think we have too much of that, eliminate sewer rate relief funding, eliminate the Quinn bill funding, cut municipal aid by $425 million below original fiscal 2009 levels. You know, the trend isn't good.
Right. The important thing, though, is, again, this is the first, the first wave of the House Ways and Means budget.
Yeah, but I say that just to point out that, you know, people say, well, why can't you stay within your means? Well, your means are changing every month, you know, I mean...
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's the reason, all the...
Well, there are things in here that will impact our budget certainly.
Right.
At least we calculate conservatively on the state, the overall state aid number.
Yeah.
I know there are amendments that are, yeah, the deadline, I think, for amendments to this budget are Friday, and then the Senate still has to weigh in, and then, you know, has to be coordinated back with the governor's budget. I don't know when we'll have, you know, we'll have some more information by town meeting, we won't have all the information by town meeting. But, yeah, you're right, I mean, it's, they're going down, they're not going up.
I'm not sure how the education circuit breaker numbers are built into the school budget, so that's the one I really don't know about impact on. The others...
Yeah, a lot of them don't affect this that much.
The Quinn bill is match for match, so if it goes down, the state funding goes down, then the town's obligation is reduced as well.
Right.
It cuts pay for police officers.
Significantly, in some cases, and I received an email from Chief Wells in response to a residents' inquiry, that the Quinn bill, right now, the funding is full to the state police, it's only the municipal police that lose the funding through the Quinn bill. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about that before this is concluded. And we'll just have to keep people posted as it goes. I wish it was better news.
But it's a work in progress.
That's right. So, David, I don't know if you, if you had anything you wanted to add, I mean, this was, this was very helpful, and I know it's a lot of work, and as much as you can predict, at least it gives us some things to think about.
Well, I have some good news.
Okay, let's get some good news. We could use some good news.
Another section of the financial policy that we want to continue...
Just the same?
...is back of sheet two.
Oh, okay.
What I've brought here for you today, something that essentially is to tell you that we're on target with our plan as it stands for FY 10. I've been giving you right now December 31st figures, and I have with me March 31st figures as well, which I'll hand to you in a second. What it does show you here is based upon our projections, our estimates of total budget versus the actual receipt in terms of revenues, not actual collections, actual revenues. We're on par with every year that we've gone, essentially for the past four or five years. I'm showing you seven, eight, and nine, fiscal seven, eight, and nine.
So this is things like real estate taxes, excise taxes, you know...
Correct.
All of the costs and fees that we charge.
All of our revenues that we generate, creations that allow us to budget for, in terms of our projections going forward, and in terms of our projections of our revenues, before we started the year, we're on target. So that is good news.
That's good to hear. That is good news.
And I wanted to further that along by showing you three-quarters of the year gone by. And to dovetail that, just so you know, the expenditures are fall flowing right on target as well. We're not overspending, we're not underspending. As of March 31st, our expenditures were at 74%. And if you look at our revenues, gee, we'll agree, we're at 74% of collections, or of budget, I should say. And it's right on par with the, our historical data.
That's good to hear.
And that includes a reduction of that, that doesn't include the reduction that was voted at town meeting, the $339,000 or whatever, $389,000 if it was. hundred and eighty-nine thousand, if it was at the February town meeting. Correct. That information is posted on here.
So that's good, as of March. So this is March thirty-first, as of March thirty-first, we are on target for revenue, we're on target for expenditures.
Yes.
That's good to hear.
That's about the best that we can do.
Yeah, that is, in this year.
Yes.
We really didn't know what to expect.
Mm-hmm.
Enough.
Which is, you know, you hear other people from other towns talk, you know, the selectmen, they're not, revenue is way up.
Yeah.
We're, we're keeping, keeping-
Because you wonder about things like boats, excise taxes, motor vehicles, if you think people are buying less, or not turning over cars, you think there'd be a loss. And right now, at least, it shows that we're still on target.
On target, yes. We're actually, I could, I must say that, the initial commitments that went out, the buildings that went out, were better than we expected. It doesn't mean we weren't collected all in terms of revenues, but at least we know that the monies that are out there, the liabilities out there, are not as poor as we anticipated.
And we take credit cards. We do take credit cards.
Although, the assets out there, not the liabilities.
Right, right. Well, this is helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it'll be interesting to see where this goes in terms of the five-year plan. Again, it's a moving picture. We can, we have a good base here in the FY ten, because we're, timing-wise, we have a budget released on paper. We can adjust that, we will adjust it based upon what the actualities occur going forward. That will change the outlooks of the other years going forward.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for David? We'll have to absorb some of this as well. Yeah.
You got it on your-
Read it before I go to bed, I promise.
I'll call you.
Put it on your laptop and bring it to bed and light this light.
Great, well, thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks very much, David.
Thank you very much for getting this recorded, certainly the favorable revenue.
Thank you, Vernon. Thank you, Vernon.
Continuing our budget discussion, a couple of things. We are happy to announce, as everyone knows, we've been working hard with our department heads, who are working very hard themselves, you know, especially given limited resources this year and intend, expected limited resources next year. And we have some of our contracted department heads who have voluntarily offered to take a zero wage increase for two thousand and ten. So starting off, our fire chief, police chief, our two deputy police chiefs, our town administrator, have asked us to vote to accept their offer to take a zero wage increase for two thousand and ten. And we are very grateful that you have all considered doing this. Along the same lines, we recognize that because we don't have presently a DPW director, and we'll be negotiating that contract, as we will for the new fire chief, that in effect is zero wage as well, because it will not go up next year. The-
Yeah, well, it's not a contract with the DPW director, but we negotiate the beginning salary.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
Chapter thirteen, and Personnel Board will also-
But we're in the position to negotiate those.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. So, first of all, I just want to say that we're grateful to the, these individuals who are willing to do this for the town. I mean, I think it's, it's recognizing the fact that their goal is to preserve jobs where possible, to allow the resources to be shifted, you know, in a very difficult year. I'm sorry, you want to mention-
I can just speak to that, Madam Chairman, a little bit. And I don't want to speak for the, you know, certainly the police chief and the two deputies, but we did have conversation about this. And we realize the town is looking for, for an override. They're well aware of the financial situation, you know, have been involved in running their, you know, the police department, certainly, you know, the selectmen's, you know, side of the, and I think this is an effort to try to, you know, you know, show the town folks that, you know, you know, that we do hear, we do understand. This is not a lot of money. Just to put it in some context, these individuals are usually grouped with the Chapter Thirteen. And right now, the Chapter Thirteen have a one percent pay raise that is potentially going to be voted at town meeting. That one percent is not funded in any article. That one percent would have to come out of that operating budget for that specific department, for that Chapter Thirteen employee. So we're not asking that we change the budgets of the selectmen's office or the police department. What we're suggesting is that, you know, the pay raise be, you know, no wage adjustment for FY ten, and that those funds remain in the budget and be used for, you know, other salary, you know, purposes. Because even with the override, I think things are still going to be, you know, pretty tight, because the state aid issue was always out there. And I think people forget that, you know, this three point three million dollar override, at least a million of that, is the result of reduction in state aid. So, you know, we'd be looking at a one-third of that amount for an override if we didn't have that reduction in state aid, or even less if state aid had increased a little bit for FY ten. So I think people just have to start hearing, you know, the conversations, need to ask the questions. Certainly, I know the selectmen have offered people to come up and talk about the budgets at their meetings, and, you know, the offices available to answer questions. We want to, you know, get the information out, so people can be informed and make an informed decision. And one way, I think, of at least indicating, you know, the seriousness of the budget situation is for, you know, the police chief, these two deputies, and the town administrator to, to, you know, offer not to take a wage adjustment for this year.
And again, just to clarify, this isn't contingent on whether an override passes or not. This is, even if an override passes, this is a zero wage increase for these individuals or these positions. And again, because we're going to be negotiating the fire contract, that means also a zero. I also just want to recognize that in the warrant articles, there is no increase in salary lines for either town clerk or the town treasurer position. So those, in effect, are zero as well. They're not going to increase next year. And obviously, those are things that allow, you know, when push comes to shove, the, the offer here is to try and save additional jobs, you know, by doing this. By allowing this increase to be used within the budget, it arguably is going to be saving additional jobs. And we appreciate the effort, the shared sacrifice that this suggests. I think that's what people are looking for. People are going through a very difficult time themselves. A lot of individual households are having very difficult times right now. And so I think what people in town are looking for is this feeling of shared sacrifice, that everybody recognizes the difficult times and are taking what are extraordinary measures here. I mean, all of these positions are, you know, are contracted to have a higher salary next year, and people are voluntarily giving that up in recognition of the difficult times that the town is facing. And we very much appreciate that.
And I think it's also important to note that all four of those individuals, when they came into their current positions, also took a pay cut from their, from their weekly wages to come into those positions, all four. And, you know, I think, and I don't want to leave, you know, I know, you know, the board asked me to negotiate contracts on your behalf. And I just want to be clear that, you know, you have a contract to be signed tonight with the fire department. You've indicated, you know, that you want, you know, the unions to understand this financial situation. And I think, you know, the unions have responded. But I don't believe that any town employee is overly paid. I think there's a perception out there that somehow we're overpaying our town employees. I think we overwork them in a lot of areas, but we certainly don't overpay them. And I think that's indicative of the fact that the Personnel Board, which also oversees a lot of the decisions that the selectmen approve as far as appointments, is only looking for a one percent pay raise for this year. And you're going to see in the fire contract, they're taking no pay raise for, for next year, FY ten. You know, there's a, there's a very moderate increase in an educational component that they have, and a little differential. But they're taking a zero, and they get the message. And I think you saw that with your other unions. You know, you have two percent for all your other unions for the most part for this year, and two and a half for FY ten, which I think is very, very reasonable, very modest, and certainly not something that, you know, people would say, you know, that they're highly paid, or they're overpaid. I think the unions are responding. I think they're willing to assist, you know, in participating in the override. And hopefully, you know, things will start to improve in FY ten, and we don't have to wait, wait it out. But if we do, I think we're prepared to do that.
Well, this sends an important message, because this is not contingent on override. This is saying we're, we're taking a zero regardless of what happens with an override, you know, that because of the difficulties that the town is facing. And I think that really must be applauded. I just wanted to clarify a little on the DPW. Again, we don't have a director right now. We have three assistants who are helping out and taking on, again, another example where people are taking on a lot of additional responsibilities because of the difficulty that we're finding. We've received over thirty applications, and those are being culled down. So it's, right now, you know, we are saving a little bit on that, in that salary line, because we don't have a director. By the time we go through the process of interviewing, it's probably going to be the new fiscal year before we have a new DPW director. So there is some savings there as well. Because our former DPW director actually had two jobs, the civil engineer position and the DPW director, depending on how the board goes. You know, there may be a reduction as well, even in this, you know, year's salary line for that position. So there may be additional savings there. But I wanted to just have the board, the vote to accept these offers, because it does unilaterally change the, the contract, accept the offers to reduce and take a zero wage increase for two thousand and ten for these positions that are listed.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'd like to say thank you very much to our administrators for being forward in their offer.
With the permission of Burne Lovely, he asked me to mention tonight that Superintendent Mary Gormley and Assistant Superintendent John Phelan have both now voluntarily offered to take a wage freeze for next year as well. And the, my understanding is the schools have met an executive session and are expecting to report out at next Thursday morning's meeting, discussions that they're having as well, to see if there's, there are other ways that they can, for the individuals who are non-union, who are administrative, if there is maybe some other adjustments that may be made. And so we look forward to hearing that report on Thursday morning. And again, I think people are getting the message very much. And these are hardworking people who are still willing to, when given the option of preserving jobs, and in effect, preserving services to the town, they're willing to step up, and we very much appreciate that. So thank you very much. The other item, just on the budget discussion, that we should address is the, we have been waiting, the town, I think, has been waiting, particularly the schools have been waiting for a response by Catherine Craven of the School Building Association with respect to a, a letter that was sent by Superintendent Gormley, asking about the potential for closing an elementary school. And in the event that that happened, whether the school building authority would be looking for reimbursement of costs that were paid as part of the building process that Milton has been in. The letter, while not definitive, would seem to suggest that the, that that plan of potentially closing an elementary school would be frowned upon at best, and that the building authority, the school building authority would have to agree to any type of plan for use of these buildings beyond what they were expected to be used for at the time that the requests were made for a ninety percent reimbursement on this. So I think that's, that's something that I think the school committee is going to be addressing. They have put the letter, the actual letter up on their website, and I do want to congratulate them on their wonderful new website. It's so much easier to use. I think Jack Rabbit and Sean Walsh, I think, should be applauded for that. But if people want to take a closer look at that, the letter itself has been placed on their website. And they can just go to the, either the town website and link to the schools, and they'll look to the school committee link as well. But if people want to see that. So that's something that's interesting. It does mean that, it sounds, at least, as if the option of closing an elementary school really isn't an option, if we're reading that correctly. And so there may be some additional adjustments that are going to have to be made by the schools.
Well, it is, it is an option, you're just going to have to pay all the money back.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not an option.
The better the board of selectmen had signed all the loan documents.
Yeah.
I know exactly what they said, and that's exactly what they said.
Yeah.
So, you know, it would be, of course, I think the discussion by the school committee was, well, we, we don't want to close a school. If we did, it would be temporary, we would put some educational program in, and so on and so forth. But the loan documents were very specific on both those points. Continuing to use the building as a school facility and using it in the way in which you had said that you would use it in order to get the grant. And, I mean, I think we want to use the buildings that way. It's just that I think in terms of budget decisions for next year, it's best, given this reality, I'm not on the school committee, but I would think it would be best to talk about budget reductions that don't reflect the closing of a building. And the only advantage to that is that you don't get into the neighborhood against neighborhood unfortunate, you know, conflicts that you have as soon as you start talking about closing one of the schools. And they're strongly felt, and they're very difficult to surround. But on the other hand, you're going to have to cut more positions. So let's hope we can build support for getting some additional funding. But I'm not surprised with that response. And Catherine Craven was the head of the authority during most of the time that we were dealing with her through our, our project. And Milton has been treated very well. They had a great rate of reimbursement. They changed the program so that they gave all the, all the money upfront. So we didn't have to borrow that money and wait each year to see if the state budget actually had it. So I think, from every other perspective, I think we got a good deal. And if that's the answer, then the town, I think, can live with it.
Sure, absolutely. We're going to have to.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other comments? Again, you know, the, the House budget, you know, we're still looking at the ramifications. We're waiting for the Senate budget. I mean, there's still a lot of flux. Our goal will be still to, on the second night of town meeting, by the end of the second night, May fifth, to make a decision as a board about an override, an amount of an override. That would be, should we, you know, continue with our, our plan of having a special town election on June eighth, we would have to make that decision by the second night of town meeting on May fifth. And I think it'll be a very lively discussion at town meeting. I think there's, I mean, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's a difficult situation. Again, there's, it's not as if people are arguing over what money there is. It's more about how do we handle the money that isn't. So that's, that still remains our goal. We'll be continuing at the next couple of meetings to update people as we hear additional information. But that's really where we are right now. Okay? So if there are no other discussions on the budget, we're going to move forward to Item eleven, which is two appointments that we have before us. One is to the Conservation Commission, and the second is to the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee. And as, as custom, when we get volunteer applications through our website, we forward them to the committees. And if there are positions open, the committees take a look at the, the skills levels and the information that is provided by our volunteers. And we appreciate the fact that people do volunteer for these committees. The committees have an opportunity to review the information and, and then vote on a recommendation for an individual that might fill a particular need that the committee has. And this has happened, in this case, with the Conservation Commission, with the resignation of Don Neal, who has moved. There is a, a individual that has been recommended by the Conservation Commission to fill that slot.
I'd make a motion, Madam Chairman, to appoint Tammy Murphy, sixty-three Concord Avenue, to the Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission, to serve through May two thousand and twelve.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I just want to read, I, I know Ms. Murphy, as she's described here, because she was pretty close to me. But she has great credentials, and I just want to mention them, because I know there were a number of candidates with very good backgrounds. And she was just regarded as outstanding committee. But it says here, she's a Phi Beta Kappa graduate of the University of Massachusetts in economics. She has a PhD in resource economics from UMass Amherst. She's a professor currently at University of Massachusetts, Boston, where she focuses on economic approaches to environmental problems. She's written articles on water quality issues, and so on and so forth.
And worked at the EPA in the past as well, yeah.
And I'm really happy she's interested.
That's wonderful. So we very much appreciate her willingness to serve. We also have a request to reappoint a member, several members of the Conservation Commission, Ingrid Beatty of fifty-seven Ruggles Lane, and Kenneth Harris Nade of sixty-five Gaskins Lane.
To serve through May two thousand and twelve. I'll make that a motion, Madam Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With respect to the Consolidated Facilities Committee, Mary Cobb had to resign in January, and Murray Regan was the only applicant listed in the volunteer database to fill that vacancy. Mr. Regan's been contacted, has confirmed that he'd like to serve on this committee. So there would, we would entertain a motion to appoint Murray Regan of forty-one Center Lane to the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee to serve through January two thousand and ten. So-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I do want to mention that they, while we're on the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee, that there is a public meeting that has been scheduled, and the public is invited, that'll take place on April twenty-ninth at seven PM at the Milton High School. The purpose of that meeting is to give the report of the Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee that was presented to the- Exploratory Committee that was presented to the Board of Selectmen and allow people an opportunity to learn a little bit about that article, which will be coming for town meeting, uh, to for vote and, uh, give people an opportunity to ask questions about it. Uh, so we encourage people to attend. I think an email's been sent to the town meeting members, that we do have email addresses for, but anybody is welcome to attend this and hear a little more about it. This is, in brief, is the, the idea of being able to negotiate with the schools, um, because the statute is, uh, the regulations prescribe that there must be a town meeting acceptance of the opportunity to negotiate between the schools and the town to hopefully consolidate and be more efficient in how we handle maintenance of our school buildings and our town buildings. And this is the first step towards that. If this article passes town meeting, the next step would be to work together with the schools to see if we can share equipment, share, uh, information, share personnel, find a way to do our job of maintaining our buildings in a more efficient way. And this is the beginning of that process. So we encourage people to attend that.
What time is it?
So it starts at seven PM on April twenty-ninth at the Milton High School Auditorium. And that's Consolidated Facilities Exploratory Committee Public Meeting. Okay, next items we have on our agenda, uh, is a approval of taxi license renewals.
Madam Chair, we have two taxi companies. Um, one has five cabs, the other has nine. You have Milton Taxi and you have CWC Taxi. And Lieutenant Brian Cherry has done an inspection of all the taxis. Um, you know, the plumbing inspector, Mark Kelly, has checked and sealed all of the, um, fees to make sure that the, uh, that the systems work, um, on the, on the licensing. Um, so we'd ask the Board to approve these, this yearly renewal.
Um, I think the motion should be changed a little bit. Madam Chairman, I'd, uh, make a motion to approve the renewal of the following taxi cab licenses. Uh, White Ca- White Cab Association, Association doing businesses Milton Taxi, Inc., one eighty-eight Providence Highway, Hyde Park. And, um, that's for twenty-six cab licenses. And, um, CWC Taxi Incorporated, DBA, Milton Cab of Quincy, Mass., uh, to be approved for twenty-five taxi cab licenses.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next item, we have several reserve fund transfer requests.
Uh, I think the first one, Madam Chairman, is, is the one for the information technology and the request is for seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-five. The Board remembers that, uh, maybe about a month or so ago, maybe less, um, you know, we haven't really put together a good plan for, um, replacement of our servers. You know, we don't have a program to where we replace them every next number of years. So we stretch it out. Usually every five years, I think, you, you're looking to replace servers. You know, we go seven, eight and, and further out. Unfortunately, what happens when you do that, you run the risk of a, a crash. And that's exactly what happened with the police department. Their, their main server, their PM, that server just crashed. Um, they tried the best they could for a period of time to, you know, just jewelry bring it up again and get it working. Um, that failed and they were faced with the need to go out because that's all the police information and replace the server. So, um, that's the first reserve fund transfer and that's for seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I'd make a motion, Madam Chairman, to approve forwarding to the Warren Committee a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars to information technology equipment maintenance to upgrade the police department computer aided dispatch and records management file server.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the second one is, um, again, the Selectmen's request.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I mean, either, this Board has always been very sensitive to the needs of, of our handicap residents and, and what we have is, you know, we have the handicap ramp, uh, we have the handicap door, um, which is not a push button door. In other words, you have the ramp coming up, but you still have to pull the door open and it's very hard if you're in a wheelchair or crutches. You're trying to hold the door open, it's not that heavy of a door, but still it's got some pull and you're trying to still get in the door. Um, we're not required to have the push button. There's people, you know, you, you push the button on the outside and the door automatically opens. We're not required to have that. But I think in this day and age, um, you know, getting access to public buildings, specifically the town hall, is very, very important for all residents and, you know, for forty-nine, forty-nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, we'll be able to go out and purchase, you know, a push button. And I think that's something that, you know, I guess it's not, it's not unusual or it's not extraordinary, but it certainly is a reserve fund transfer request. And I believe there will be money in the reserve fund as we, we come down to the remainder of the year.
Well, under, under ADA, if you, if you were going to build the town hall from scratch, I think you'd be required to have.
Absolutely. Our grandfather, yes, exactly.
And all of it, yeah, yeah.
And, and the school buildings are grandfathered.
Right.
But you're right, exactly.
So I'd make a motion, Madam Chairman, to approve forwarding to the Warren Committee a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents for the purchase of a swing door system for the handicap door of the town office building.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know having one of those on crutches, boy, I could tell you, that was a very hard door to open when you're on crutches as well. And it's not just that, I mean, uh, people use that door, you know, with strollers, with small children, trying to get into that door is very, very difficult. I mean, it's, and so I think it's, it's money well spent, you know, and hopefully the Warren Committee will agree with that.
Well, anyone that were gross, we would just tell them, a lot of those people were trying to get in here, trying to pay their taxes, which helps us all, so.
Oh, that's true.
You know.
That's true. Well, I hope they can, hopefully they can. Okay, and the next item we have is actually with respect to unemployment compensation.
The last one, Madam Chairman, is unemployment and it's, it went up, um, a little bit this, this past month. Um, the reserve fund request is for six thousand six hundred and seventy-six and basically the increase from last month to this month, and it had been declining, was the fact that we did have one school, uh, I think it was a teacher who had been laid off. My only assumption is that the individual had been rehired in another district, maybe part-time. And the part-time, his, his work has been completed, which now makes that individual eligible to go back on unemployment on the town.
Really?
Yes. So, um, that's the reason for the, the increase this particular month. Um, hopefully, um, you know, this individual will be able to secure another position and come off, but, um, you know, it's the, it's, your last employer, full-time employer, is the one responsible for your unemployment.
Well, I'd, I'd make a motion, Madam Chairman, to approve forwarding to the Warren Committee a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of six thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars to unemployment compensation.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Next item we have is actually a, just a brief, uh, discussion or announcement really regarding the two thousand ten decennial census, which is coming up. Uh, between April and July of two thousand nine, the US Census employees are going to be visiting every housing unit in every neighborhood of Milton. Um, in order to do that, the Bureau has to, um, actually go from house to house and, and collect information. Um, it's, a couple of things are important to note, that the Census Bureau employees are going to have ID, very clearly noted ID, um, for, to visit the house. No one has to go into any home in order to collect this information. Um, the, all the information can be taken at, you know, at the doorway of the home. Um, there is going to be some, uh, the reason this is important, I mean, some people feel that this is kind of annoying to have to answer the door and to answer questions. It is really very important because correct numbers on the census enable us to receive state and federal funds. So it really is important that people answer these questions, as annoying as it may seem. We did go through the process last year of having to have an adjustment made to our census numbers. And the adjustment gives us more money from the state and federal government. So for each person that lives in our town, each person that lives in our community, um, we are allocated a certain amount of, of funding. And so it is very important that people do take the time, as annoying as it may be. Um, these are people, we've been watching people being trained, uh, census workers coming into town hall, being trained downstairs. They're all really nice people, a lot of them are from the community, who are, are working, uh, doing this task between April and July. So we very much appreciate people, um, answering the questions and taking the time to, to be counted. If you're not counted, you know, there are less funds that come to the town and the fund, the additional fund to help all of us. So we appreciate your, your patience and your efforts and, uh, have a nice smile for those census workers who are going door to door between April and July here in Milton. Uh, so that was really the extent of the, the information that we wanted to give to people about that. Um, next item, we actually have Eagle Scout recognition. Uh, it's that time of the year again. We've got three Milton Boy Scouts who are going to be, uh, participating in the annual port of honor for Eagle Scout candidates on Saturday, May sixteenth, three PM at Cunningham Hall. And we're being asked to sign letters of recognition for Douglas Kemp of fifty-one Granite Place, David A. Campo, and Paul M. Campo of nine Woodchester Drive, acknowledging their achievement to the rank of Eagle Scout.
Second? Move, and?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll be interested to hear what the projects are because they have to do projects in order to, to achieve this rank. And we've had some really great examples of terrific projects, so that have helped the town, so I'll be interested to hear that as well. Okay, next item we have is, uh, National Little League Opening Day. Well, it's been a long winter and now you know it's going to be spring when it's the National Little League Opening Day. We have a, a proof, a request to approve the request of Milton National Little League to use the town green in Canton Avenue for its annual opening day festivities that will take place on Saturday, April twenty-fifth, beginning at eleven AM, contingent upon approval by the police department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. We've got some banner requests. The first is, uh, to approve the request of the Council on Aging to display a banner announcing its thirteenth annual golf tournament that will be held on June first at the Milton Who's a Club in Canton.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I presume we'll be getting more information about that as well so that we can announce that. Um, we have another proposed motion for a banner request, to approve a request to display a banner announcing the first annual arts festival featuring exhibit pieces by Milton High School students that'll be held at the Massasoit Community College Canton Campus on the weekend of May sixteenth.
So moved.
Where, where would this be displayed?
It doesn't just give a location.
It's going to be displayed in East Milton Firehouse.
Oh, East Milton Firehouse.
So they have a spot, okay.
Okay.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Uh, we've had a request for the use of town green by garden clubs, um, item eighteenth. Okay, here we go. This is a proposed motion to approve a request from the amateur gardeners of Milton to use the gazebo and the town green for their annual plant sale that's going to take place on Saturday, May ninth, and to display a banner on the green announcing the event two weeks prior to the sale.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of the Milton Ga- uh, Milton Gardeners of Milton to use the gazebo and the town green for their annual plant sale that'll take place on Saturday, May ninth, and to display a banner on the green announcing the event two weeks prior to the sale.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And also make a motion to approve the request of the Milton Garden Club to use the town green on the Unitarian Church side on May ninth for its annual perennial manure sale.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
No comment, no comment.
No, I'm not going to say anything, but I did want to mention, it reminds me that, um, I got a call from Nancy Murphy today or yesterday saying that she would like to, um, she, she's worked, working on the front of the town hall, they've done a lot of beautification there. But, um, she said there's a little area around the, the, um, light that was put in front of the town hall that shines back up in the town hall. I think it's on a piece of wood. And she said that she'd like to plant some flowers right in front of that to kind of shield the wood, which isn't particularly pretty. So she doesn't need any help, she doesn't think she needs any help from DPW. She wanted to make sure the Board had no objection. And I said, I don't think.
No, no, we want to preserve the view of that wood. Are you kidding me? I mean, that's historical wood, I think.
Does she need a permission or vote or anything from us?
No, I think she just wanted me to run it by the Board.
Oh, I think that's wonderful. Thank you, that, we appreciate her doing that.
That's wood from one of Ted Williams' bats. I mean, we can't.
Precious as it is, we'd love to see some flowers planted in front of it.
Exactly.
That would be great, thank you. And thanks, thank to her as well.
It does look great out there. You know, in another couple of weeks, it's going to look super.
And could I ask on the next motion that we just refer to the text that's in our, our, on our page here?
This is regarding one-day liquor licenses to Milton Academy and their events on June twelfth and June thirteenth, a lot of events on June twelfth and June thirteenth, each of which, um, will require a one-day liquor license, um, which is great because it'll be income to the town. Uh, I think it's fifty dollars now a piece. So, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license to Milton Academy for the events of June twelfth and thirteenth that's listed in our text.
I would, that's so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. And that's actually ten requests listed here, okay? Um, next item, we have an approval of recommendations of the Traffic Commission.
Madam Chairman, Traffic Commission met on, uh, April eighth, Wednesday, April eighth, and there were a number of items that they'd like the Board to consider. Uh, the first one being Elliot Street down around the old Fallon's Building. Currently, um, there are, there's a service zone on, on Elliot Street, uh, on that section from the central hour business area up to the Adams Street, um, Village area. And there are two-hour parkings. Um, there's, the two-hour parking seems to be okay, um, but there is, seems to be a little more robust number of people working in the business in those areas. Um, so the service zone has, has been kind of shrinking. So what the Board, uh, what the Traffic Commission is asking the Board to do is increase, uh, to change some of the two-hour parking to service zone to, to give some more ability for the, uh, people, the employees and, and the owners of some of the stores down there or some of the businesses, um, some more parking space. It's away from any of the business areas, you know, your Board's very familiar with the areas, so it, it, just to give them some more service zone, free up. Now, you know, if and when, you know, the central hour projects are all, you know, underway and, and, and developed and maybe you need to come back and, you know, modify or change. At this point in time, I think it would just be something the Board may want to consider to just allow some additional.
So have we had requests for more parking than we have available? Is that?
Yes, because the service zones.
We changed it back to, because the owner, because Fallon said, you know, they wanted to be, people wanted to know that there could be parking available. And of course, we can change it, it will pretty much if we take the vote of the Board. But, so what's the reason for changing that back?
The reason right now is, we had, when Fallon's had gone and when some of the construction was going on down around there, we had, you know, did two-hour parking in hopes of, you know, getting some more people to, you know, generate to the business area. They don't really need all that. We, like Brookhill Road, we changed, um, that was all service zone and then we kind of flipped that into, into regular parking, so that kind of took up the slack.
Well, we flipped to one side to regular parking and then we had the other side as designated.
So what, what we're having is, there, there, the businesses need some more parking spaces. We don't issue enough, you know, the service zone sticker program issues, I, you know, how many stickers get issued, but way more stickers than there are certainly available parking spaces.[1630.73] spaces. The only thing service zone does, it says, if you get there soon enough, you can park there all day during the business time. And you pay a fee for that, and there'll be a night-
So how many requests, I mean, what requests have we had?
I think it's like five or six spaces. It's not that many spaces.
So we're changing five or six spaces?
From two-hour to service zone.
And that reflects the number of, we've had a number of requests for more-
Approximately. There's probably more need for it than that, those spaces, but still would help offset.
Okay. I mean, I, I have no objection to making the change. It's just we're changing it back and forth, somebody has.
We're just trying to accommodate the business people, and the business needs down there.
And they get a service zone sticker, right?
Yes.
That they have to put in the car.
Yes.
That they're charged for, or the employer is charged for.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure nobody, you know, it doesn't become someone's habit, because you're going to lose the parking lot down, you know, where the old police station was.
Right.
To, to park there and take advantage of the all-day parking to go on the T in town, you know.
Well, the police department enforces that. I mean, they're, they're pretty good about enforcing the service zone and the, and just the, your regular limited parking down there as far as time goes. They're very good about enforcing it, so.
But you can't get a service zone sticker unless you work in a business, right? Doesn't the business owner have to buy for it?
But you're just talking about enforcement, making sure that it's being enforced properly.
I understand what you mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, anyway, I don't want to make a deal about it, you know. As, as, as conditions change, we can always change it.
Well-
I don't know if you want to vote individually, or just run through it?
Well, why don't you do them individually. On the recommendation of the Traffic Commission, Madam Chairman, I'd vote, I'd make a motion to amend Article Five, Section Six, Article V, Section Six, service zone parking so as to include the following: Elliot Street designated service zone parking spaces on the odd number northerly side of Elliot Street, from Ninety-Five Elliot Street to the service zone parking adjacent to the Milton Hell House.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second item is Thompson Lane. Lieutenant Cherry, who's the safety officer, had been contacted by the neighbors down there. And what, what appears to be happening in the morning is that the Reedsdale Road traffic seems to be backing up a bit at the lights down, you know, Brook Road and, and Center Street, or Central Ave, I should say. And what's happening is people in order to avoid the light are now taking a right onto Reedsdale, from Reedsdale onto Thompson, then taking a left and beating the light. And the residents down there have noticed an increase during the, the morning commute, and they had asked the Traffic Commission to look into it. Lieutenant Cherry did look into it and felt that putting a restriction of do not enter from seven to nine on Reedsdale to Thompson Lane intersection would be appropriate. And it's important to note, because we have a lot of, Reedsdale Road, you know, is a major roadway, it's the Route Twenty-Eight corridor. And there are a lot of side streets off of Route Twenty-Eight who also, depending on traffic volumes, depending on time of day, get some cut through traffic. But Thompson Lane is isolated, you know, unless you live there or you're going to visit there, there really is no other, it's not cut-through street per se, other than to try to get through the lights, or, or, you know, not wait for the lights down at the intersection of Central Ave. So there is that distinction. And, you know, I know the board is always very concerned about just these do-not-enters, because it does have the effect of maybe pushing traffic onto other streets. This is not the case.
This actually applies to them.
Does everybody in the street want to do this?
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody in the street.
It applies to the residents as well.
Does it keep you from getting on the street?
They, they would have to come in off of-
Yeah, but they can come in off of, off, down by Kerrigan's Corner.
Off of Brook Road or off of Canton Avenue. They can still come in off Canton Avenue, or they can come in off of-
Yeah, I know they can get in, but I mean, you know, I just want to make sure that they, I realize it's, it should be a benefit in terms of reducing the traffic flow. So as long as they're generally-
By the same, the residents have-
How, how old is Steph to determine?
Are comfortable with that type of restriction.
Restriction? Okay. Okay.
Well, I'd make a motion to amend Article Three, Section One, so as to include Thompson Lane do not enter seven to nine A.M. Monday through Friday, signed at the intersection of Reedsdale Road. Let me just throw this out. Would, given your very apt observation, because I've seen this happen before, would you want to put it on a trial basis until July thirty-first, let's say, and then we'll re, relook at it?
Do a sixty-day trial or-
No problem. I mean, you're going to put the sign up, you're going to do it, but that we'll, we'll make a reminder in our mental, our little calendar or something that we would ask for a report on how it's working.
Right.
That all the changes are like that, I guess.
Do it for sixty days and then see, you know, and then, then bring it back to the board and we'll vote permanent, if the residents then have no objection.
I think that's a good idea. So that would be an amendment to the motion, to say, for the period of sixty days on a trial basis-
Right.
-to be revoted in, at the end of the sixty-day time period?
Right.
Okay.
If the board wants, we can do service zone the same. We can just monitor all of these votes for sixty days and report back.
Okay.
So we have a motion now amended, and we have a, do we have a second to this amended section? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hutchison Street, Madam Chairman, is the same as Thompson Lane. You know, the only time people go down there, and what's been happening in the morning is, you know, although the intersection down there at Canton Avenue, Randolph Avenue and Adams Street has been done over, and it's really, you know, aesthetically pleasing and stuff, we still, it's high-volume traffic in the morning. And one of the issues are that on Randolph Avenue, the traffic starts to back up, and people start to realize that if you, you know, you take a right on Hutchison as you're heading towards Adams, you come back out on the other side of the Adams Street, take a left, and you can, you know, screw down that way. So there's only a couple houses on the street. The residents have been contacted. The residents were the ones who raised the issue with the police department. And again, this is, this is a unique situation. This isn't a cut-through street per se to get to, you know, another, you know, connecting street. This is to try to just, you don't want to wait in line for the traffic to kind of move through, so you, you know, you take the right.
Well, I, I spent many a morning standing on that street corner down there, so I, I understand it. I'd make a motion to amend Article Three, Section One, so as to include Hutchison Street do not enter seven to nine A.M. Monday through Friday, signed at the intersection of Randolph Avenue.
Second?
And that would actually include the language that we just talked about for the sixty-day time period?
Yeah, there's very few people in that street, so if they're, yeah, I'll, I'll include that.
Okay.
The mezcal would make that, from now on, we'll just do it on a trial basis, just to see how things, decently go.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one, Madam Chairman, is Brook Road. That's, you know, everybody knows that Brook Road is Central Ave, and Reedsdale Road is a well, well-traveled intersection. And part of the problem we have is that if you're on Brook Road at the set of lights and you're facing towards East Milton Square, and you're right there at the Pierce Middle School, Central Ave is that little size street. You know, everybody keeps, you know, everybody knows about who goes, you know, see, if you have children in Pierce Middle School, you know that Central Ave is the street that goes through. But a lot of people just think, they come to that, that intersection, and they think they can just shoot up Reedsdale Road. You know, if Central Ave wasn't that connecting street, and wasn't as traveled as it is, it's okay. But what happens is, because there's no, there's no signs right there that says, it does authorize a right turn on red. So people stop at Brook Road, they're going to take a right, go up Reedsdale, and what's happening is Central Ave at that time gets a green light. And both technically, you know, have a, have a right of way. So in order to avoid it, and this, this is not to stop putting up, you know, preventing the right turns on red, because I think that helps alleviate traffic congestion and kind of moves the flow of traffic better. But this particular intersection, and that particular, you know, street right there at Brook Road before you hit Reedsdale, you really shouldn't be allowed to take the right until you get the green light.
Yeah, this was brought to our attention by the, the crossing guard down there, Cheryl Little. And, and I stood down there with her one morning and, and just watched it. And it is right, we need more, no right on, on, on red signs down there, because more and, you know, it's not an elementary school, or double elementary school, or a high school anymore, it's middle school, and there's more walkers. So-
Yeah, I think there's two reasons to do it. That confusion is clearly a problem.
Right.
But because it's a heavy pedestrian traffic at certain times there anyway, I think for safety reasons, it makes good sense.
It's a good idea. And I thank Cheryl for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, so do we have a motion?
I would move, let's see, that we amend Article Eight, Section Eleven, so as to include Brook Road, easterly no turn on red at the intersection of Central Ave.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item, as the board knows, a few meetings ago, the Milton Bicycle Advisory Committee was, was in here and did a discussion for the board and the display. And one of the things that they have been advocating for is the fact that, you know, we're trying to make Milton more enticing for bicyclists. And putting up a lot of signs is, you know, you just, it becomes, you know, a little bit unaesthetic. And you need to designate areas so the bicyclists know where to go. And one way of doing that, and the Bicycle Committee did a great job, is to actually mark the roadway with these chevrons. And you have a picture of the Chevron in, in your packet. It's the same one that was, that the Bicycle Advisory Committee advocated. And the board had asked that the Traffic Commission review the Chevron as opposed to signage, and report back. And they are reporting back that they, they think they concur, the Bicycle Advisory, that rather than putting signs, that we do the road markings that have been designated for bicyclists. And that, those are the same markings that are going to be on the one-thirty-eight intersection that Sucey's actually doing it in behalf of, and start, and start that project going from Napont Valley Parkway up to Trailside Museum.
So I would move the recommendation of Bicycle Advisory Committee that we approve the program for selected roads in Milton is outlined in the company package from the Advisory Committee that uses the bike and Chevron markings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one here that was missed, yeah.
The Brookside Park.
Oh, the Brookside, I'm sorry.
Keep bright sign on Brookside Park.
Yeah, Brookside Park is, you know, there is an island down the middle, and they just wanted the signs to keep bright so people knew. So you'd kind of keep people to the right of the road.
To make the traffic through.
Make the trip, just make the-
Yeah, makes some sense. I'd make a motion to install keep bright sign on Brookside Park at the intersection of Brookhill Road at the bottom of, and at the bottom of Brookside Park.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item, Madam Chair, for the board to consider is, you know, right now, we talked about the service zone parking, and the service zone parking stickers are ten dollars each. It doesn't guarantee you a spot, it just guarantees you, if you get there and the spot's available, you can use it. The, the fee for that has not gone up in a number of years. It's just a modest fee. It pays for the stickers, you know, decals that you put on your, in your window and stuff. But the Traffic Commission had, had voted to increase it from ten dollars to fifty dollars. I spoke a little bit with-
For fifty dollars, I'd want a guaranteed spot.
And I spoke with the police chief about it, and, you know, Chief Wells, you know, I think understanding, you know, that, you know, the needs are, we're trying to improve the, the availability of onsite or close to the business parking as possible for the patrons and the, you know, and not for the business people, or for their workers. And we need to put them in, in outlying areas. And that's the whole part of this program. But, you know, to jump from ten dollars to fifty dollars might be something the board wants to kind of think about and maybe modify, because it would be a significant jump. And a lot of your small, you know, stores, the actual owner pays for the, for the fee, so, you know, for the stickers. So if you have four employees, you know, the store owner's paying forty dollars currently, and that would go to two hundred dollars.
The one that's the last one, it's ten years ago.
It was ten, it was ten dollars back in the seventies.
I don't remember it in the time of this, but-
It was, it was probably five dollars at one point, went to ten dollars, but it's been a long time. I think a modest, the board may want to think about a modest increase. Certainly, the Traffic Commission had recommended a jump to, to a more significant number, but I think they-
Is that based on a comparison of other communities, or?
Partly other communities, and, and other facets. But each community has different ways they handle service zone. Some, you know, you're guaranteed almost a spot, you're almost guaranteed the spot. In fact, they mark them out for stores, you know, you know. Walgreens would have so many parking spaces in a particular, you know, area, you know, off the business area. But we don't have that. It's just first come, first served. And it allows them the opportunity to get there early enough, and there's a space available there.
I'm even willing to recommend that we double it to twenty dollars. And if they want it to be higher, they need to come back and explain to us what the cost is to the Department of Administering the Program, because that's what it's supposed to be based on. But given the long period of time since it's been increased, I think an increase is probably appropriate, but, but I wouldn't recommend anything more than that.
Right, because a fee is supposed to just cover the-
Well, the idea is, we want, we want employees to park in these spaces. So I don't see, I think it makes sense-
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I'd make a motion to approve the, well, no, I'd make a motion that we increase, because it isn't approving the request of the Traffic Commission. We'll, we'll make a, I'd make a motion to raise the annual fee for service zone parking stickers from ten dollars to twenty dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that would be effective July first? How, do we have an effective date? We need an effective date.
Well, I'd say July first, because companies, they must have, what's the normal? It's usually January.
I think we start in January. I think we run a calendar year, so I think we-
Well, we're going to screw up, David, grab spreadsheets with this.
[laughing]
Why don't we say July first?
Do I say July first?
Well, it's effective any new application, isn't that what?
Right.
Yes, it, it, yes, any new application, then when the process kicks in.
Okay, so twenty dollars effective July first.
Effective immediately, but it, but that doesn't mean that people have to come in and pay extra if they already have it for, through the end of the year.
Right.
Whenever their fee expires, and, I mean, their permit expires, they have to come in and get it.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Great, thank you. Next item we have is the signature of the Milton Firefighters Agreement.
Madam Chairman, as the board knows, you signed a memorandum of agreement with the fire union for a three-year contract. And the wages for those three years, I had mentioned earlier in the meeting, was, it's a two percent for, for this current fiscal year, and that would be retroactive. It is a zero percent for fiscal ten, and it's a three percent for fiscal eleven. And again, I, I want to thank the, you know, the fire labor negotiating committee for, for their hard work. I forget the number of meetings we conducted over this past year, but they were, again, there were a significant number of meetings. I think that this contract is at least a recognition by the fire union of the difficult times the town has facing going forward. They have, you know, one, and I'll just, you know, explain that, you know, one of the reasons they're willing to take that zero for FY-ten is because they're concerned about the staffing level that's currently in place. They know there is no minimum manning. They know that the Board of Selectmen, it would be highly unusual for, for the Board of Selectmen to agree to minimum manning. But they, they do want at least to have the Board of Selectmen think about if there are funds that are available, and they get their staffing up above the ten, they would appreciate that. And, and part, part of that reason is in this contract for that fiscal year. And the other one is, I, I think partly because of the budget situation, that they, they see the circumstances, and there's a lot of Milton firemen who live in Milton who understand the problem, similar to the discussion we had under the budget. So it asks the Board of Selectmen to consider